Did anybody else have any problem with their device? It was last Monday night. You hear me?
I don't think so, no.
I couldn't. I said go to meeting, I went to the meeting. But then I got over to Cisco Kid and got him a hook up to tell it to buy.
I would ask that our city manager release his invocation and plead of allegiance.
Certainly. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to join together to do the work of the city. Lord, we thank you that we live in a country that's free. Lord, we pray for all those that are struggling through this situation right now, Lord, those that are in worse situations than us. So we pray for wisdom, for the leadership of this country down through the states and even here at the local level, that we might do the work that you called us to do. And we just thank you, praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise be to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is in order because we have, for the councilmember president, we have Councilwoman Brown on remote with us, so we certainly have a quorum. And the first item we'd like to do is have you all make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I need several of you to sign into the meeting.
I'm signing here, right here.
Showing all I have is, I don't have Ms. Brown and I don't have Mr. Walker.
Okay. I swear to God, I signed in here, but I didn't sign out of the other one.
Did you sign out, my man?
That's what the problem was.
Get out of the meeting first.
You got me now?
Got you. I don't have Mr. Walker.
Hang on, he's working. No, not really, I'll join the other one.
This is going well now.
Yes.
I done been there one time.
I did too, but you hadn't signed out of the other one. Can't be two meetings at once, some kind of a law.
Right. You get all this taken out?
Got us all now? All right, so we do have everybody here. That's good. Thank you, Madam Clark. Okay, can I have action on the agenda, please?
Mr. President, will you approve the agenda?
A second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion on that?
No.
By roll call, may I pro temp your vote?
Yes.
And Councilman Walker?
Yes.
Councilman Rensich?
Yes.
Councilman LaBoff?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Okay, Jennifer, tonight has been approved. First thing we have on tonight's agenda is a development update from Benchmark Group on incoming shopping centers.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Council, we are joined this evening by the Benchmark Group, be it remotely. I see Lowell Larson is up there. He's the local representative that kind of connected us to this group. And then Marty and John are also online. And they're up there in New York. You guys hunkering down up there?
We are hunkering down for the 46th day, so it's been a long, hard road, but yes, we are.
Forty-six days. So, okay, well, and what I asked them to do, councilmembers, was to give us just a brief update of what's going on on this piece of property that's located between Price Gregory Way and Highway 85 over there where, and you guys have heard me say it a dozen times, where the Asian restaurant says that coming soon under new management, the only thing coming under new management is a road through there. And so what I'm going to do is turn it over to Marty, and Marty's going to kind of walk us through just a presentation. But again, I felt like it was important. They reached out to us to make sure that we knew that they were still doing business. They've been fighting through the virus up there, but not going to let them keep it, not going to let it keep them down. And I just feel like, right now, with all the things that are going on in the economy, it's important that we recognize that we do have some positive things going on as well. And so these guys are going to do that, and then we'll take whatever questions we have. And you guys try to lean on them and see if they'll tell us what these store names are, because I can't get nothing out of them. All right, Marty, you first.
Thank you very much, Tim. I appreciate it. And thank you for the intro. We are the Benchmark Group. We would like to just thank Tim and Wayne. They've been tremendous help for us to get to this point. We're excited. Scott McCormick at Beach Community Bank's been great to work with, as we've been, we closed on the property back in December, and looking forward to closing on more property with them. And Lowell Larson's our people on the ground out there, so we really appreciate everything he's been doing for us. Just to introduce you to the group that will be working on this project, on slide number two. We have, I'm the executive vice president, director of real estate for Benchmark, John Rehack, who's also on, is our director of acquisitions and development. Our architect on this project will be Daniel Carrera, DT Studio, they're out of Tampa, worked with us on several projects, very good architect, produced for us, and we're happy to have him on the team. Rob and Taylor Engineering, Robert Robb did the engineering civil work for the Loews that was built right next to us. So we figured we better bring him in, because he knows how to deal with all these grades and the soil conditions and everything else. So Rob will be working on the civil engineering. We enlisted Kim Lee Horn to do the traffic study, and they'll be doing the road design and the traffic signal design for the intersection. They're great. They do a ton of FDOT work throughout the state, so we think they'll be a great addition to the team. And of course Lowell was the broker on the transaction, and Lowell helps us out there in the field as well. So on slide number three, just to give you a little background of our company, the Benchmark Group, we're a 37-year-old family-owned real estate company out of Buffalo, New York. Three principals, Arthur and George Gellman, Clark Narrens, hired me 36 years ago, so I've been there for quite a while. Our portfolio consists of retail, office, multifamily, and hotel properties. We're located in about, our properties are located in about 12 states. Our portfolio is valued at about $1 billion. You know, we're not, we're not a huge REIT, but we're, you know, capable of handling ourselves. Eighty-plus retail and office properties, plus or minus 4.2 million square feet of space, about 34 multifamily properties, 6,300 units of apartments, very low for us. We like it up to about 15,000, but the world's been a selling market rather than a buying market. So we're hoping to build some new apartments to increase that side of our portfolio. We like to be diversified. So our staff is about 230 people, and we have about 200 investors that invest in most of our real estate projects. So if you could go to slide four. Basically, the markets that we've recently developed in is New York, Ohio, Pennsylvania, Tennessee, South Carolina, Florida, and Georgia. I wanted to bring forth to you a couple of specific projects that we've done recently, which are similar to this type of development. The first one is, it's a series of developments in Lady Lake, Florida. It's called Village Crossroads, Lady Lake Crossing, Lady Lake Commons, and Lady Lake Square. And then, Tim, if you could just switch to slide 4A for a moment. This is Lady Lake, Florida, which we've been developing there for about 14 years. Where the Sams is on that area, that was our first acquisition. It was similar size of what we're doing right here. It was about 24 acres. We developed for Sams on that parcel with a Texas Roadhouse out in the out parcel. And then we went across the street, and we just kept buying land. We did what we call Village Crossroads, which has Best Buy, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Petco, Joann Fabrics. It's been running about 98% occupancy for the past 13 years, 14 years. Out parcels, Longhorns, we have a dental office, we have vitamin shop, so a series of out parcels. Then we bought land next to that and developed it for Kohl's, and with Tuesday Morning and a few other tenants in there. And then we developed next to that, where we put in Stein Mart and Alta and Boot Bar. And then we did out parcels for Verizon and McDonald's. And now, across the street, we're doing a grocery anchor center called Lady Lake Commons, which is going to have a Total Wine, Goodwill, it had a Miller Ale until we got shut down, but they'll be opening back up, a Mission BBQ, a dental office. And then we're going to develop 44 acres behind the Sams, where we're doing 285 units of apartments, and a hotel project there as well, and a few other retailers. So that's the kind of thing that we like to do. This is kind of, you know, this sort of shows you what type of projects we've mostly been working on in the past 15 years. Tim, can you go back to slide four? So the other projects I just sort of highlighted for you, we did a project called Hammock Landing in West Melbourne, anchored by a Target, the Kohl's, lots of, about 690,000 square feet of retail there. On the other side of the highway, we're doing a center called Interchange Center, where we have a hotel, two hotel deals there, out parcels, restaurants, and daycare center. And then we did a center in Vieira Village, which is a grocery anchor center. We bought a center there 15 years ago, redeveloped it. We're about to be 100% occupied once we get through the problems we have here with the, so we'll be close to 100% occupied. We did a joint venture with CBL and Fort Orange called the Pavilion. And then, of course, most importantly, we did the Fairfield Inn here in Craftview with Lowell at the helm there, so we completed that project recently. I gave you a few references, you know, I invite Tim and Wayne, if they'd like to talk to the town of Lady Lake, town of Clarence, city of West Melbourne. I just gave some references there that you could contact, that, you know, ask them what's it been like developing with us along the way, because it is a joint venture for us with the communities we develop in. Okay, if you could switch to slide five. Slide five shows the subject property, the 22 acres. We are going to alter it slightly once we get our roadwork in, but that's what we're looking at right now. So this is what our subject property is. It'll be called Crestview Commons, with frontage on SR 85. And then, if you could go to slide six. Slide six represents our 37th site plan on this project. So basically, what we have here is the current site plan for 22 acres. We're planning on 70, approximately 73,000 square feet of retail in line, with three out parcels. The site comes with some challenges, as I'm sure you probably know, and you don't want to hear a developer complaining, but I'll just tell you that the extreme slugs throughout have been very challenging, but we've got it mastered.
Marty?
We're going to be importing about 140,000 yards of fill to grade the site. We have to relocate a gas transmission line that runs through the middle of the site. We will be installing the traffic light at the corner of Hospital Drive. We have a traffic study completed, and the signal's warranted, so we have our engineers getting ready to go to meet with FDOT to start the process. So we will design that intersection and the traffic light in conjunction with the city and the county. In order to overcome the grades, we'll be constructing about 2,300 linear feet of retaining walls to bring the grades to the point where we can build up the inline retail. If you could go to slide 6A. Just an overview of the project. It's going to be plus or minus about a $14 million development, as I stated, 73,000 square feet of space in line, three out parcels of approximately 16,000 square feet total. We are in heavy negotiations with national retailers for a majority of the space. We do like to keep space for local retailers, so we will try to accomplish that with one of our out parcels, the southernmost out parcel, so that we have a little bit of a mix of local people as well as the national retailers. We're looking at job creation of around 50 jobs for 60 weeks on the temporary construction side, and permanent jobs would be around 250 based on shifts. Next slide, please, number seven. Signage. We like to construct signage so that we take some of the architectural features from the buildings and incorporate it into the signs, so that they have some character. So we will be working on that as we finish our design on the buildings. But what we'll be looking for is a pylon sign at the corner to identify all the inline tenants. And it's really important, I've had this discussion with Tim and Wayne, because of our elevation differences, from the front of the project to the back, visibility is a big thing with these national retailers. So it's going to be important for us to have a pylon sign at that corner, and then the out parcels would have a monument sign with either one panel, or where their local retailers are putting on the south side with multiple panels. So that each out parcel would have its own monument sign. So here is an elevation for you, which I absolutely say is a work in progress. We need to define, what we like to do with the retail center is, we like to define a theme, and we like to use materials consistent throughout the theme. We like to break up the horizontal and vertical masses with architectural features, with color and textures. Okay? We like to raise the bands of our anchor spaces. Pylasters and cornices we use to break that up. We always put a three-foot minimum parapet throughout, which provides screening for the rooftop equipment. Any exposed CMU has to have color and texture to make it aesthetically pleasing. So we are working on elevations. This is a model. This does not really incorporate a lot of the features that we will have in elevations, but we will be providing those elevations to the city as we move forward on the project, so that you can review them. Landscaping is a big thing with us, is you will, if you ever Google Earth out to Lady Lake and take a look at our stuff out there. We use a landscape architect we have a lot of respect for, Jay Brown from KPM Franklin out of Orlando. Ground cover, canopies of the trees, all very important. A mix, the right mix, is important. He researches local plants to make sure that he's incorporating plants that do well in your environment. So in addition to that, we like to tie in walkways between the inline space and the out parcels, so he'll also incorporate that. All our landscaping will be irrigated, so that we can control that. We like to use reuse, but I don't know, I'm sitting here today not knowing, I probably should ask Wayne what reuse situation is in the municipality, but if it's available, we use it. If not, we will use potable water. And we use LED lighting for our land, for our site lighting. We like to incorporate wall packs on the building to shine on the building, to give it a attractive appearance, but we're very cognizant to the, we get photometrics done, and we make sure that our lighting stays on our site, and it remains on our site and doesn't come off our site. So we have photometric plans done by professionals for the site. So it'll be a mix of pole lighting with dual heads in some situations, single heads in others, and wall packs on the buildings. If you could go to slide nine, please. Slide nine, I'm just trying to show off a little bit of the modeling that we had to do. This model is actually to scale. So these, the next two models you see, show the building exactly to scale on what their finished floor elevations will be. And we did this because when the national retailers first looked at our project, they Googled Earth, that they said there's no way they could come here, because if you, the way you look at it now, you would be 40 feet below the street level where the buildings are. So we had to do an extensive amount of modeling to scale, to show them how we could achieve what we're going to achieve. So I wanted you to be able to see the layout of the center and what it's going to look like once we have it constructed. Slide 10, again, is a sort of a repeat, just from the other angle. This, by the way, on slide 10, that out parcel to the south, that's the one where I'm anticipating a multi-tenanted building, rather than, the other two would be single national restaurants, but this one would be a multi-tenanted, which I could, you know, also incorporate some local tenants if they're interested in being on the site. Slide 11. This is the current road design for the extension of Hospital Drive. We will be constructing this in conjunction with the city. This design needs to be reviewed by the city engineers. We planned on doing that about 35 days ago, but with everything going on, our plans got screwed up a little bit. But this is our current design for bringing Hospital Drive up through your current, very attractive Chinese restaurant that will no longer be served. And coming up through the site. Under new management. Yes, under new management. And I will not be releasing to them, I can promise you that. It was important to bring that up and tie it in to Physicians Drive, so that we could keep a connection with all the other retail that's out there now, the public center, everything else, so that people don't have to leave the retail sector to go back out onto the highway and then come back in. So we worked on a design that frankly, Tim and Wayne and his people have not seen yet, but we think it works. And so this road will be built during our first phase, along with the traffic light, and it will tie in to Physicians Drive, and it will terminate up at the end of our property. And the next slide will show you what's the most important factor of this road, is to tie in to the future east-west connector, which we're excited to be a part of. So that will, so we will be coordinating through Tim's help and Wayne's help with the county to make sure that the roadway is designed to accept the traffic off the east-west corridor, right down to the traffic light. And we still have a little bit of, we're probably about 45% through the design of it, and we need to get it reviewed by everyone and then get back to work on it, and that's where we're at right now. That completes the project review, except for one thing. I purposely did not address schedule. And I didn't address schedule because I, we're in such a strange world right now, that I don't like going out there and putting forth a schedule that we instantly can't meet. But I will tell you this, that our plans were to, the first project we have to do here is the relocation of the gas line. That has to be done before we do anything else. We were in with a set of plans to the gas company two weeks ago, and we're continuing to work with them on this. Our hope is that we're going to be able to relocate that gas line this autumn. And if we can do that, and we can start functioning up here in our offices and getting back to normal, our plan was to have major earthwork done the third and fourth quarter of this year, and pads prepared for buildings first quarter of next year. So that's what our schedule is right now, as we sit here today. And if everything proceeds, I think that that's attainable, but I just don't feel comfortable committing to schedules until I know when I can go back to my office. It's been 46 days, and we're in kind of a tough situation up here. We had two employees test positive, one almost passed away, so we had to stay out of our offices completely for 15 days. So it's been a little bit of a trial up here, but we are very hopeful to be moving Earth out there this third quarter. Okay? And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Marty, can you speak to, before we turn it over to council, can you speak to your ability to maintain the leases that you were working on prior to the virus?
Sure. I was going to open with that, I apologize. A couple of things I can tell you about us. First of all, as a developer, we are very low-leverage developers. We don't have any, most of our retailers, I have 73 lease revisions going out to national retailers in the next six days, who aren't paying rent in April, and they're all reaching out, and we're reaching out, and we're working with them. One thing I can tell you is, Benchmark as a company, we will not have any issues with any of our properties in the next three months. We have enough cash flow coming out of our properties to handle the tenants not wanting to pay the rent until things settle down. So as a company, I'm happy to say we did not lay one person off, we didn't furlough anybody. We are working, we're keeping our employees, and we're going forward with all the development deals that we had on the table. So there's no hiccup. We are delaying one hotel project for a couple of months, as Lowell knows, and that's in West Melbourne, only because we want to, you know, make sure everything returns to the hospitality world the way we expect it to. But other than that, you know, as a company, we're fine, we're stable, no issues with what's going on. The retailers that we are talking to are all still going to committee. I had to get a package out to one of them on the 22nd, because they're going to committee in two weeks. So we are in discussions. One of the national retailers did say that they're not going to review anything for another month and a half or two months, but we have a very nice hit list of retailers for the site, and I will tell you that the retailers that we're talking to absolutely plan on still being in business, and they have not shied away from your market at all since the virus has hit.
All right.
Do you have any comments or questions, Mr. Council? Councilman Rensich, you're up.
I just have one comment. I want to thank you for a great presentation, and you and Benchmark Group for bringing this investment to Crestview. It's going to be a great adjustment and advancement for our community.
Thank you. We're excited.
Okay. Yeah, again, I'd like to reiterate what the Councilman Rensich just said. Thank you so much, great presentation. We've been waiting to find out where you are on this, and this is great. Can't wait for it to come to Crestview, and thank you so much.
One thing I would like to uncover, and I think Mr. Walker has something. Marty, one of the questions that we're getting, we get all the time, talk a little bit, if you can, about, and I know I'm not going to be able to squeeze any names out of you, but talk a little bit about the two out parcels, what the plans are for those two out parcels, is that still the same? Has it changed? Tell me a little bit about that.
We have letters, right, sure. We have letters of intent for both of those out parcels from National Restaurant Chain. So there's no hiccup. We are delaying one hotel project for a couple of months, as Lowell knows, and that's in West Melbourne. Only because we want to, you know, make sure everything returns to the hospitality world the way we expect it to. But other than that, you know, as a company, we're fine, we're stable, no issues with what's going on. The retailers that we are talking to are all still going to committee. I had to get a package out to one of them on the 22nd because they're going to committee in two weeks. So we are in discussions. One of the national retailers did say that they're not going to review anything for another month and a half or two months, but we have a very nice hit list of retailers for the site, and I will tell you that the retailers that we're talking to absolutely plan on still being in business, and they have not shied away from your market at all since the virus has hit.
All right.
Do you have any comments or questions from council? Councilman Rentsch, you're up.
I just have one comment. I want to thank you for a great presentation, and you and Benchmark group for bringing this investment to Crestview. It's going to be a great adjustment and advancement for our community.
Thank you. We're excited.
You guys are good?
Yeah, again, I'd like to reiterate what the Councilman Rentsch just said. Thank you so much, great presentation. We've been waiting to find out where you are on this, and this is great. Can't wait for it to come to Crestview. And thank you so much.
One thing I would like to cover, and I think Mr. Blocker has something. Marty, one of the questions that we're getting, we get all the time, talk a little bit, if you can, about, and I know I'm not going to be able to squeeze any names out of you, but talk a little bit about the two out parcels, what the plans are for those two out parcels, is that still the same? Has it changed? Tell me a little bit about that.
We have letters, right, sure. We have letters of intent for both of those out parcels from National Restaurant Chain. Now, I will tell you this, that early on, they were battling on who was going to be on the hard corner, and who was going to be in the middle. We went back and forth with them on that, but other than that, you know, we resolved most of that. The restaurant, you know, I'm not going to kid you, the restaurant world right now is in a very, very difficult environment. But I will tell you that one of the, one of the national restaurants that we have a letter of intent on this site, we are finishing a letter of intent with them in a site in New York right now during this whole thing, which sort of blew my mind. So the reality is, we think that we will have two national sit-down restaurant themes for those out parcels, and then the third one, you know, we're just kind of, we don't really need to have three. We think that if we mix in a few retailers in there, it'll break it up a little bit. And parking is a little bit of an issue, too. We have to be real careful with the parking demands. So by putting in some traditional retail in there rather than restaurant, it helps our parking counts out a little bit.
So the key thing you said there that I wanted to make sure we got across is, right now, you're looking at sit-down, national chains, but sit-down restaurants.
That's correct.
And so the other thing that briefly, if you could just touch on is, because this is one of the things that I like to try to make sure everyone around here understands, is that there is a little bit of an economy of scale when you come into Crestview because of the elevation changes. And so the struggle that you guys have had with, you said you're bringing in 140,000 loads of dirt to be able to lift that site. So when, you know, tell us a little bit about working through that process, and you've got all that done, that's the gas line, that's the whole deal?
Sure. And, you know, I always have to be careful not to sound like a whiny developer with the municipalities that I work with. And, you know, we always work closely with our municipalities, and it's a good, it's a joint venture. Until we get this done, you know, we have to work hand in hand. This site, for 22 acres, is probably one of the most complex sites of just 22 acres. If it was 50 acres, I could understand it, but just a 22-acre parcel, it's been extremely complicated. The grades have been extremely difficult. We had to purchase the 140,000 yards of soil from another site to bring it on to the site. The number, I've never built 2,300 linear feet of retaining walls on one site that's even 60 acres. So, you know, yes, I mean, I'm not going to kid you. And then there's FDOT has an old drainage piece going through our site that they don't want to touch, and they don't want to do anything with, and we're going to have to relocate it. The transition gas line is not an easy project. So, you know, yes, we're 22 acres. I wish the site was 50 acres because I probably have enough retailers to fill it, and we could spread our costs over 50 acres rather than 22 acres. But be what it is, that's fine. That's why we got to do the site and someone else didn't, probably because there are a lot of issues there and no one really wanted to take it on. And by the way, we do have an option to purchase an additional 15 acres with the bank, and Lowell's been kind enough to be working with Scott and getting us the extension until we can get through this virus period. But, you know, we're hoping to do a little bit more on this site in addition to the 22 acres we're doing now so that we could spread some of those costs over additional land.
All right, I appreciate that, Marty. I just wanted you to help cover that because I tell them that all the time. So I want them to hear it from someone else.
Yep, I appreciate that.
Councilman Block, do you have a comment or question?
Marty, Joe Blocker. First of all, I want to commend your presentation. And I also advise you that I commend the development that you have did down in Melbourne and also there at Lady Lake. I have visited both sites. I commend you.
Oh, thank you.
I've been in the building, been in myself commercially for 60 years, but I want 60 days you people to start here in Crestview. One of the beauty from your presentation there, I believe every infrastructure there is only a single story, am I correct?
I'm sorry, which one?
Is all your infrastructure a single story? Do you have any multiple story?
Yes. No, most of this will be all single story, that's correct.
Well, off the top of your head, you mentioned about that 2,300 linear foot of wall. What's the vertical highest of your highest point of that wall from ground level? Do you know that, old man?
It does vary. I did, I did hear that from our engineer the other day. He said, I asked him how many linear feet. He said, gee, I never calculated. And he said, and you know what, by the way, it all varies in height. I think some of it is going to be, you know, four feet. I think some of it's going to be 13 feet. So I think it varies greatly, depending on where it is.
Well, we just can't wait till you get started here.
Well, thank you. And I'm sorry I'm not there personally. I talked to Tim and Wayne about that. I like to, I was talking to my growth management people at Lady Lake, and I told them I was doing this. They laughed because every time I do a PowerPoint with them, it never works. But I said, I'm doing this remote, so I'm really stressed out. But fortunately, my daughter is a teacher in Vermont, and she's had to quarantine here, so she helped me set everything up and got me all set up. So I'm sorry I'm not there personally, but we will be there as we get ready to announce our tenants and bring in our elevations and go further with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments, questions?
All right, thank you, Marty. We won't make you guys hang out. We got about 14 ordinances to read. So we appreciate you all, and thanks for hanging out with us. You guys hunker down and stay safe up there in New York.
Okay, thank you. Same to you. Please stay safe, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Talk about some good news, huh?
It is good news.
And one thing, Mr. President, if I may make a comment, this is what the citizens have been asking for for a long time.
Right.
I like the concept, you know, I didn't want to take a bit of his time there, but plus the growth that it does for this, provides another shopping opportunity. Plus, one other thing, it provides great employment for local people who can stay right here and probably get good-paying jobs. So I like the concept, I think, with the, once this is developed, there's other opportunities for the other land on that, maybe a future. I think it's going to open that up, really. And about the highway, you know, connecting with the connector, that is super fantastic. You get, you don't have all that traffic on 85, you can bypass it, especially for the people coming from the south. And that's what they're doing in all major cities, where you go and it sits out, and you got a road, it connects with your interstate, where you can go, get off the interstate, go shopping, come back, get on the interstate and go. So this is fantastic. I am truly happy about this.
Yes.
So I applaud the work that our city manager and all the other people have done towards this. You know, we've been, since I've been on the council, we've been trying to look at groups, and look at groups, and look at groups, and look at groups. Well, Tim, you're the man. You've got something going, man. I'm going to support you 1,000%.
I don't know how much of that's my credit, but I'll take it.
Well, what it does demonstrate, when you heard this presentation, demonstrates why people have been hesitant to develop that particular area. It is a challenge. It really is.
Yeah, it's one of the, if I may, if I may interject, one of the things that we identified as something that had to be addressed was the sign code. You know, he talked about those, and that's probably why he put it in his presentation, because it was so essential that we were flexible in our sign code in order to allow him to recruit the national tenants because you can't see it. It's, you know, it's 13 feet, but it's 40-foot of elevation change across that property. So, you know, it's going to be very hard to get a national, you know, 25,000-square-foot chain into one of those buildings if they can't be seen from the main roadway. So things like that, you guys are doing that. That's what we're doing through this code change process, is being flexible and looking at that stuff.
Yeah, sure, teamwork, sure.
Absolutely. Okay, let's move on. If I can get action on the consent agenda. We only have one issue, I mean, just minutes on there, a whole bunch of minutes. Can I get action, please?
Mr. Mayor, so I move.
Second.
I move a motion second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? Roll call, starting with the Mayor Pro Temp.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LeBuff.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda has been approved. We have no resolutions, public hearings. We'll move right down to ordinances, first one being 1755. I just want to make a remark before we get into this area. Two remarks, actually. Number one, for those tuned in and watching us, if it appears as though we're going through these rather quickly, it's because we've been seated also as the LPA, and we have seen these very recently. And so we're very familiar with these. So if you don't see a lot of discussions, not because we're not interested, it's because we've gone through this process, like I said, real recently. And secondly, when you see the type of ordinances we have, annexations into the city, zoning changes, comp plan amendments, it tells all of you out there that in spite of the fact we have this bad old virus going around, this city has not shut down. We're still doing all kinds of developments here. So having said that, I'll turn it over to our city manager now for ordinance 1755.
Yes, sir, thank you. And if I may, before I get into the ordinances, one of the things I did want to mention, you know, because to you all, and then also, we have a pretty good audience watching live right now, is that every single one of these ordinances, we have 13 items coming tonight, all of these were done through telecommunicating by your staff throughout this COVID-19 virus. None of, this is not work that was pending beforehand. These are applications that they've done either through remotely, or go-to-meeting, or from their homes, working remotely. And so I'm super proud of them. So I wanted to throw that out there because while other, I mean, I'm not pointing fingers, but while other people are closing up shop and not doing work, I'm talking about municipalities, we continue to try to get this stuff done because we know how important it is to have things moving as soon as it opens back up so we can get our people back to work, the citizens in Crestview. So we're excited about all of this work coming on. And so I'll go ahead and get started.
Go ahead.
All right, so ordinance number 1755 is an ordinance for a comprehensive plan amendment to Amos Street. We talked about this during the local planning agency. It's .66 acres, which is just over a half an acre. And what they are requesting is a land use change to allow them from, it's a low-density residential land use. Right now, they want to go to a medium-density residential land use with the intent of constructing a five-unit apartment building. The property is currently inside the city limits, and the property currently has the appropriate zoning for it. So it just needed a land use change, or the zoning will allow it, needed a land use change, and they, there are no, we did have one couple show up during the local planning agency meeting. They asked the question how this would impact their properties. They live on or around the area, and the answer to that question was, and still remains, that this is specific to the property listed here in the item, which is shown here on the map, and will only impact and affect that. They are building an apartment unit close to some single-family dwelling, so they will be required to provide buffering through trees and things like that. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions, comments?
I'm sorry, at this point, yes, at this point, I need to have the city clerk read it into the record. So city clerk, if you'll read ordinance 1755 into the record for us.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker. Ordinance number 1755 reads by title. An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from low-density residential LDR to medium-density residential MDR on approximately 0.66 acres, more or less, in section 17, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for several ability, providing for scribner's errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance 1755.
Again, ordinance 1755 is an ordinance establishing the land use, making a change to the land use for the property located on Amos Drive. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any comments, questions from the council? Do we have any relevant public comments on this particular ordinance?
No, sir, none on this item.
Okay, then I'll call for action by the council, please.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff recommendations and move to second reading.
Second.
I have motion second to approve staff's recommendation, ordinance 1755. Any further discussion? Seeing on roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LeBuff.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
All right, that ordinance passes on the flow to 5 to 0.
Yes, sir. The next item that you have before you is actually a combination of, we'll be talking about three ordinances and the combination of one piece of property. We'll start with ordinance 1756, which is an ordinance to annex a piece of property on Applin Road. This property is actually completely surrounded by the city limits right now, which means that it's an enclave. City staff identified that this property was not inside the city limits when the build, when the property owner was pulling a permit on his property adjacent to it. And so as a part of our program where you can annex into the city, and we're waiving the fees right now, he went ahead and took advantage of that. So these next three ordinances are really no change to the way they're doing business, no anticipated new development. This is just about getting a piece of property that should already be in the city, in the city. So at this time, I'll have Madam Clerk read ordinance 1756, the ordinance for annexation into the record, and then I'll take questions.
Ordinance number 1756 reads by title. An ordinance annexing to the City of Crestview, Florida, plus or minus 0.64 acres contiguous lands located in section 20, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, providing for filing with the Clerk of Circuit Court of Okeechobee County, the Chief Administrative Officer of Okeechobee County and the Florida Department of State, providing for several ability, providing for scribner's errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance 1756.
Again, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, ordinance 1756 is an ordinance annexing this property located on Applin Road.
Any comments, questions from the council? Action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance 1756 on first reading and second.
I have motion second to. Motion is second to approve ordinance 1756 on first reading. Send for second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing on roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LeBuff.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5 to 0.
Mr. Mayor, ordinance 1757 is an ordinance establishing a comprehensive plan, future land use for this piece of property. That designation will be commercial. It's consistent with the existing and future plans for the property. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, right after the city clerk reads ordinance 1757 into the record.
Ordinance number 1757 reads by title. An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from Okeechobee County Mixed Use MU to Commercial C on approximately 0.64 acres, more or less, in section 20, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for several ability, providing for scribner's errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance 1757.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions, comments? Call for action, please. Oh, wait a minute, any comments in public?
No, sir.
Okay. Action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Move that we accept staff's recommendations.
Second.
I have motion second to accept staff's recommendation. Any further discussion? Seeing on roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LeBuff.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5 to 0.
Ordinance 1758 is an ordinance establishing the zoning for this property, making this a required public hearing. Actually, the next one will be the public hearing. So actually, we don't need to do that. So this is an ordinance establishing the zoning for that piece of property. The designation will be C1 zoning district. It is consistent with the surrounding and the surrounding uses and the future use of the property. We did, one of the things I left off earlier is we did perform all the required advertisements. The mailouts, the property posting, and the ads were run in the newspaper. And so I'll enter this into the record at this time. Madam Clerk, if you'll take, if you would read ordinance 1758 into the record, I'd appreciate it.
Ordinance 1758 reads by title. An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 0.65 acres, more or less, of real property located in section 20, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the Okeechobee County Mixed Use MU zoning to a district, to a Commercial C1 zoning district, providing for authority, providing for the updating of Crestview zoning map, providing for several ability, providing for scribner's errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance 1758.
Any comments, questions from the council? Any relevant comments, questions? Any relevant comments, questions on, from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, a call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move ordinance 1758 on first reading and send it to second.
I have motion second to, I have motion second to approve ordinance 1758. I move the second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
That motion carries five to zero.
Ordinance, the next ordinance you have before you is ordinance 1759. This is an ordinance for the annexation of 32.49 acres of property located on East Highway 90. This particular property is, tonight, only being discussed for the annexation, as the developers are working closely with staff to determine what the outcome of this property will be. It's expected that it will be a residential development with possibly some commercial along Highway 98. And I'm happy to answer any, or actually, Madam Clerk, will you read 1759 into the record, please?
Ordinance number 1759 reads by title, "An ordinance annexing to the City of Crestview, Florida, plus or minus 32.49 acres of contiguous lands located in Section 15 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, providing for filing with the Clerk of Circuit Court of Ocaloosa County, the Chief Administrative Officer of Ocaloosa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1759.
Any comments, questions from the council? Any relevant comments, public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance 1759 on first, send it to second.
Second.
I have motion second to approve ordinance 1759, send a second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
That motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we move on to the next item, we did receive a question, there's a little bit of a delay.
Oh, okay.
So, we received a question on that annexation on our Facebook Live post, and the question was, "We own the property, not included in the, in ordinance 1759. Will this affect, will this move our, will this move affect our property at all?" And again, this ordinance is a request to annex the portions that are included in the descriptive ordinance and not the ones that are not. So, Ms. Jones, the answer to your question is, you will not be annexed in to the property unless you choose to. So, that's the answer to our question. Wanted to make sure we put it in the record.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to ordinance 1760, which is an ordinance to annex a piece of property owned by the city. We discussed this at length during the LPA. The purpose of this annexation of 5.32 acres and the subsequent land use and zoning is to open up some areas for future annexation and current annexation. So, Madam Clerk, if you would not mind reading ordinance 1760 into the record for us?
Ordinance 1760 reads by title, "An ordinance annexing to the City of Crestview, Florida, contiguous lands located in Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment, providing for filing with the Clerk of the Circuit Court of Ocaloosa County, the Chief Administrative Officer of Ocaloosa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1760.
Any comments, questions from the council? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay. A call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff's recommendations for ordinance 1760.
Second.
I have motion second.
Second.
I have motion two seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the staff's recommendation on the ordinance 1760. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
All right. That motion carries five to zero. Moving along.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 1761 is the ordinance that would assign the land use to this property. Staff's done the review. We've done the postings and are recommending approval. Madam Clerk, will you read ordinance 1761 into the record?
Ordinance 1761 reads by title, "An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from Ocaloosa County Mixed Use MU to Public Lands P L in Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1761.
Any questions, comments from the council? Any public comments we need to know about?
No, sir.
Okay. Call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move ordinance 1761 on first reading and send it to second.
Second.
I have motion second to move ordinance 1761 from first reading to second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 1762 is an ordinance to establish a zoning district of public lands for the properties previously discussed. And Madam Clerk, if you would mind reading ordinance 1762 into the record.
Ordinance 1762 reads by title, "An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of real property located in Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the Ocaloosa County Mixed Use MU zoning district to the Public Lands P zoning district, providing for authority, providing for updating the Crestview zoning map, providing for the several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1762.
Any comments, questions by the council? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move to accept staff's recommendations for ordinance 1762.
Second.
I have motion second to approve the staff's recommendation on the ordinance 1762. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
And that motion carries five to zero.
All right. Mr. Mayor and council, the next three items that you have before you are, again, an ordinance for an annexation of a piece of property, and then the next two ordinances will set the land use and the zoning for that property. It's 1.52 acres. It's located on industrial. This property is, one of the reasons why we annexed the previous property in, so that we would be able to reach it and annex it. Again, this is an exciting development, I think, for the area, so I will go ahead and say it during this meeting. They do plan to annex and then move forward with the development. The development is to construct a youth sports training facility so that we can build up our youth sports. They want to bring in trainers and give them the opportunity to teach kids how to pitch, how to hit. There'll be some, it'll be indoor activities. And so, they're really looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a great opportunity for us to continue to grow the talents. One of the things, briefly, with, what happens with baseball now is because in the younger ages, we've got a pitching machine. It takes them longer to develop. It puts some of our students behind a little bit. So, this was one of the things they expressed to me, that by doing this, they'll allow the students to get the training in pitching and catching and things like that at an earlier age than they're currently getting them here in Crestview because we do pitching machine. And so, that was just one of the things they mentioned, but I thought it was, it's a great project, and so, staff is definitely behind it. And we've done a full evaluation. The notices were sent out on April the 6th. We posted the property on the 13th, and we ran the ad in the paper on April the 15th. So, all the notice requirements have been met. We've received no comments on it. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll read ordinance 1763, the annexation of this property, into the record, and I'll answer questions.
Ordinance 1763 reads by title, "An ordinance annexing to the City of Crestview, Florida, plus or minus 1.52 acres of contiguous lands located in Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, and being described as set forth herein, providing for authority, providing for land description, providing for boundary, providing for land use and zoning designation, providing for an amendment to the base land use and zoning maps, providing for a comprehensive amendment, providing for filing with the Clerk of Circuit Court of Ocaloosa County, the Chief Administrative Officer of Ocaloosa County, and the Florida Department of State, providing for several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1763.
Any comments, questions?
I do have.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Love the idea. It's something we don't have, and it's going to be great for the kids to have something else to do. Have they given any tentative timeline on how far along they are on the actual development portion?
Yes. Actually, they, they, they're pretty far along. They've got a designer, they've got a architect, I believe, working on it. They definitely have a civil engineer working on it. They have tried to get it done in the jurisdiction that they're in right now and have been unable to do that, and that's one of the reasons why they wanted to go ahead and annex, because the zoning, our zoning fits it. We're a little bit more flexible. Because of the, because of, we're just a little bit more flexible. How it fits into our, our commercial zoning district and the use allows them to accomplish it. So, they are, I said all that to say they're farther along than, than, you know, the starting point. They still have a little bit of work to do. It is a, they do also own a construction company as well, so they're raring and ready to go. I think it'll move very quickly if everything gets sorted out with the virus.
Any other comments, questions? I would just ask one thing. I've noticed that, I think, both in the LPA and this one, you mentioned hitting and pitching. Is that, is it going to be exclusive one sport, or is it going to be multiple sports?
As of right now, their focus is on the baseball, softball field of it, but also, the building that'll be constructed will allow for training for quarterbacks, you know, single one-on-one type training. It'll be difficult soccer, those types of, of, single drill type.
Disc golf, maybe?
Maybe disc golf, but it'll be, it'll be hands-on, you know, one-on-one training is really kind of the focus of it. So, it's about the use of the space. That's what ran them into trouble with the zoning before, is if it's called recreation and it's so many square feet, they could, there's no way they could build the parking. But it's, it's a training facility, and it's intended to have one or two or three individuals at a time in there, and so, that's, that's why they're able to do it here, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Could I have action, please?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept staff's recommendations for ordinance 1763.
Second.
I have motion second to accept staff's recommendation on the ordinance 1763. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
And that motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, ordinance 1764 establishes the zoning for this from a county mixed-use zoning to a city commercial zoning. Madam Clerk, if you'll read ordinance 1764 into the record, I'll take any questions.
Ordinance number 1764 reads by title, "An ordinance of the City of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from Ocaloosa County Mixed Use MU to Commercial C on approximately 1.52 acres, more or less, in Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1764.
Any comments, questions by the council? Any relevant public comments?
No, sir.
Seeing none, a call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I move ordinance 1764 on first reading and second.
Second.
I have motion second to move ordinance 1764, approve ordinance 1764 on first reading and move to second reading and further discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Temp Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker.
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch.
Yes.
Councilman LaBeauf.
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 1765 is the last step for this piece of property. It would assign, it would change from the county mixed-use zoning district to the City of Crestview's Commercial C1 zoning district. Staff's done a complete analysis of it. It's very, it's consistent with everything around it. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have as soon as the clerk reads ordinance 1765 into the record.
Ordinance 1765 reads by title, "An ordinance of the City of Crestview, providing for the rezoning of 1.52 acres, more or less, of real property located in Section 8 Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the Ocaloosa County Mixed Use MU zoning district to the Commercial C1 zoning district, providing for authority, providing for the updating of the Crestview zoning map, providing for several ability, providing for scribners' errors, providing for liberal interpretation, providing for repeal of conflicting codes and ordinances, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance 1765.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any comments, questions from the council? Any relevant public comments?
No, sir.
Call for action, please. Call for action, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to offer a motion that will receive staff's recommendation for ordinance seventeen sixty-five.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve staff's recommendation on ordinance seventeen sixty-five. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Tem Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker?
Yes.
Councilman Rensich?
Yes.
Councilman LeBeuf?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, Mr. Mayor, last ordinance we have tonight on first reading. Ordinance seventeen sixty-six is an ordinance to adopt Chapter 3 of the Administrative Code and Procedures for the Land Development Code. Madam Clerk, if you'll read that into the record, then I'll go through the description.
Ordinance number seventeen sixty-six reads by title. An ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida, repealing and replacing current Chapter 102 Land Use Regulations, Article 2 Administration, with a new Land Development Code, Chapter 3 Administrative Procedures, providing for authority, providing for review of all chapters 102 Land Use Regulation articles or parts of articles, ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for enactment of the New Land Development Code 2020, Chapter 3 Administrative Procedures, providing for compliance with the State of Florida statute, providing for severability, providing for scribner's errors, providing for liberal interpretation, and providing for an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance seventeen sixty-six.
Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Mayor, the ordinance seventeen sixty-six, as we stated, adopts our Chapter 3. It's the first reading for the adoption of Chapter 3 of the Administrative Code for the Land Development Code. We had a joint meeting of the LPA and the, and the City Council a couple of months ago to discuss ways that we could increase efficiency in our land development. Some of the stuff you saw today with Benchmark is the things that we've been trying to do within our current code, but that will, this will allow us to adjust the way that the administration of the code is handled. We will, between now and January, continue writing the entire code, rewriting the entire code. But we felt like it was important to establish, it was important to me to establish Chapter 3 initially and quickly because it sets forth in Table 311-2 a standard expectation for the timelines for reviews. And that was one of the things that, from the time that I've been here, we've really wanted to get, I've been really wanting to get, is a measuring stick for us of how fast we can and should be getting through developments. It also clearly, it sets forth clear standards for the developers, so they know exactly what's required when they come in. It's not come and show up and then we, you give us some stuff and then we think of something else you might need. Those standards are laid out, not that they would do that, but our standards are laid out specifically now to say what is required for each different type of development. It also, as I mentioned during the LPA meeting, does change the dynamics of the LPA Board itself. It implements a policy that creates two, not only it has the two ex officio positions, but it also creates two alternate positions, which will help us to never be in a situation like we were around Christmas where we did not meet the quorum requirements and had to reschedule a couple of times. So this is something that's important to us and staff's been working really hard on it. We did not receive any comments from the LPA, the public, or any of you all. We did attach, as far as needing change, we did attach a amended COVID-19 schedule to the adoption, but we're still pushing forward to adopt the entire code by January and this to adopt it and implement it immediately. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Comments, questions? Go ahead, Mr. Blocker.
Tim, are you a liberty to name the staff that's working on this code?
Sure. Trey Dooley is working on it. Don, out of our planning department, is working on it as well. Barry Henderson, the Community Development Services Director. Jonathan Holloway, our city attorney, has been working on it, and myself.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
And, and actually, our GIS team as well.
Do I have action, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance seventeen sixty-six on first reading and move to second reading.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve ordinance seventeen sixty-six at first reading and send a second reading. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Tem Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker?
Yes.
Councilman Rensich?
Yes.
Councilman LeBeuf?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
And that motion carries five to zero. All right, next action item. The next item, you know, every year our, our charter requires that we vote on having a backup to me in case I fall over sometime during my term, so, just in case. It's called, call the Mayor Pro Tem. But actually, it's more than that. It's not somebody just sitting and waiting. If I can't make something. It is, it's, if I can't make an appointment or something like that, public appearance or whatever, I'm immediately going to Mayor Pro Tem to do that. If I get ill, I'm on vacation or whatever. And quite honestly, I'm pretty available because essentially I'm retired. So that called on a lot, but I will say this much, that Councilman Hayes, Mayor Pro Tem Hayes, was always available when I called on, on him, and I appreciate that, filling in for me. So anyway, what I'd like to do now is call for someone, a motion to nominate who's gonna be the Mayor Pro Tem for the next year. So if I could have action, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilwoman Brown.
You know, I think Mr. Hayes has done a great job, and if he's willing to accept it again, I would like to nominate him again.
I have a motion nominate Councilman Hayes to stay in a position. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion second. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Hayes, are you, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir. I'm, I, I, I don't think I, I'll be having to step up, but, because our mayor does such a fantastic job, as long as his energy level stays where it is. But just in case something might happen, I, I'm willing to just fill, fill those shoes. But I know he's gonna be for a long time, so.
That was my only question, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, saying that he was nominated in the second and he feels competent to do that and confident to do that. I'll go to a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem, do you, you vote for that? Do you favor that?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Blocker?
Since he voted for it, I will too.
Councilman Rensich?
Yes.
Councilman LeBeuf?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brown.
Yes.
That motion is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fill in for me again. Okay, the next action item, I believe we're right back to you, City Manager.
Yes, sir. Item 10-2 is a request to approve an extension to the contract for the purchase of Foxwood Estates. As you can imagine, the, the merger with the bank and its new bank has slowed down to pretty much a screeching halt right now with the courts being as they are during this virus. And so the banks, First City Bank, reached out to me and asked me if we would entertain an extension to our current contract to purchase. And so I said that I would bring it before you. Staff does recommend that we do that, that we go ahead and maintain the course. You'll notice that we did not bring back the ordinance for the actual involuntary annexation to you. You heard it on first reading at the last meeting. We did not bring it back. With this delay in the process, it, timing is so essential to this whole deal because we want to be telling a story that's fair to the residents with as much information as we can. So, so we are working together, the city attorney and myself, to come back with an actually revised version of that ordinance, which will incorporate some of the other things that needs to happen with it. So it's our intention to continue to move forward. They are asking for an extension date to June the 29th. I'm comfortable with that. One of the things I really like about that is we'll have some good revenue projections by then, so we'll kind of know where we are. But as far as we're concerned, we think this is still a good purchase and is something that we should continue to do.
Any questions, the City Manager on this? Comments? Action, please.
And I believe the attorney has reviewed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have reviewed.
Go ahead.
I've reviewed this contract extension as part of the agenda preparations. I think he just wanted you to know that I looked at it.
Did you see any public comments popping up on that?
No, sir.
All right, action, please.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion for the approval of the negotiated terms of this contract. Also, would the council approve for the mayor to execute any and all documentation to accomplish this purchase?
Second.
We have a motion second to do all those things that Councilman Blocker just said. Approve the staff's recommendation. Unless, if you all want me to read it again. Okay, good. All right, thank you. Any, any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote by Mayor Pro Tem. You get to keep that term. I don't have to learn a new one.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Blocker?
Yes.
Councilman Rensich?
Yes.
Councilman LeBeuf?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries five to zero. Madam Clerk, do you have anything to report to us this evening?
Actually, no, sir, I don't. However, I'm happy to report, thanks to Chance and all his workings back there, as y'all aren't used to seeing Chance here, it looks like our live streaming and our Facebook viving is working really good.
Very well.
He and Kenny been in here all day making sure they both could get it done, so, great job, guys.
That's good, good.
For sure.
And let's recognize CCTV, they're back there also, broadcasting live. Appreciate that. The masked man back there.
Virus-free.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the council. I'm gonna trick everybody and start with Councilwoman Brown.
What about the City Manager?
How about the City Manager? How about the City Manager? He's doing a great job for us, isn't he? How about him? You have report, how could he have anything else?
This is probably the most, one of the most important things that I'll do this evening. You, you all know, and I appreciate your allowing us to place a little bit late on the agenda, an item to be discussed tonight. And I've got it on the screen, but it's, the item is our creation, a creation of a small business grant program. I've laid out for you in the staff report, and I won't read through it since I've been talking a lot tonight, but the, the timeline for how everything came down with the COVID-19 virus. But it's, it's interesting, it's hard to believe that it was March 1st when this really started to be, when we started tracking this thing in Florida. And we're only, you know, on, right now, April the 27th, and it seems like we've been in, in isolation for 100 years. But as we, as we rapidly approach the end of this term, where, where the governor's safer-at-home order, which is set to expire the, the end of this week, I think it's important that we begin to, not only begin to, but that we continue to do everything that we can to help our small businesses. As I mentioned to you all in my first update a couple of weeks ago, or maybe a month ago, on this, you know, we are doing all we can to track revenues, where they are, where we expect them to go, and, and looking for ways to try to make sure that we don't spend on things that we don't have to spend on. And we've been doing that, that I feel like very well. And we're very comfortable at where we're, where we are right now and getting ourselves through the end of this year. Now, how, how next year looks and what the budget's gonna look like next year is still left to be determined. And I'm sure it's gonna look different than we would have anticipated that it would look in January 1. But while this is going on, I think it's important that we do anything that we can possibly do to help our local businesses. We all know that the federal government has done stimulus packages, they've done the Payment or Payroll Protection Plan, they've done bridge loans, all of which are out of money. They've been refunded recently, but all were out of money at the time we wrote this staff report. But a lot of our small businesses, you know, one of the things that we came across in, in the several meetings that I've had on the small businesses is that, you know, people are saying, make sure you tap into the resources that you have, the banks that you have, the accounts and that kind of stuff. Here in Cresview, you know, we, we saw earlier on Benchmark's presentation where they showed us all of the, the good things that are coming, all these national tenants and huge retail facilities that, that we're gonna have next year. But right now, the entire, almost the entire of our retail backbone is held up by our small businesses. And so our retail shops are, we have a lot of independent gyms, we have a lot of independent hair salons and places like that. And truly in Cresview, though it may sound, sound cliche, truly in Cresview, the small business is the backbone of our community. We have just a couple of large tenants, but other than that, it's mostly small businesses. And so we were waiting to see, the county looked at doing a grant incentive program for small businesses last week. They opted to take a different approach. They're gonna try to do maybe a loan program off of their interest proceeds and things like that. Well, here, we don't have, you know, as much money in the bank to be getting, to take interest to do loans with. So what we're actually proposing this time is to take a section of our general fund revenue, our business tax receipts, and set it aside to be returned to our business community through our small businesses, specifically through a grant program. As you saw in the backup information that, that I provided to you, staff is recommending that we produce this program, that we set aside 75,000 of the 125,000 that were budgeted to receive. If you noticed in the staff report, we've only collected 26,000 so far, but that's because business tax receipts come in at the tail end of the year, and they don't come in in the beginning, they come in in the last couple of months as, as their renewals are coming up. But even if Gina and I, our finance director and I spoke about this, even if we see a reduction in our general fund revenues, there are some areas that we've cut in our spending already and some areas that actually where we were able to accomplish things with a little bit less money than we expected to, that we have the money tucked away to do this, even if we don't see the full 125,000. But that is why I wanted to keep the number lower than the total amount that we expected to receive. It's because we, we never know how it's gonna turn out. Later on this year, we expect that we will get, and the mayor and I talked this morning about a program through the Community Development Block Grant, our CDBG, that you guys have just allowed me to hire a contractor to put together our plan to get adopted by October. Well, there's an out, an allotment of about $90,000 in that program that will come later on this year. The problem is that we have to get our plan completed and our plan approved before we can even begin to administer that money, and we don't know when that's gonna happen. Also, because it is, well, I shouldn't say it that way, it is a federal program through HUD. It's super convoluted and nobody really knows what the rules are. And so we, you know, we were on a phone call today, Barry Henderson, one of our directors, and our contractor were on the phone today and listened for two hours and still didn't get real clear direction about what that money can be used for. So we don't, we know that our small businesses don't have time. I spent about 30 minutes today, literally 30 minutes on the phone with one of our hair salon business owners, asking and begging to find out when they would be able to reopen, because they gotta be able to make their rent and they have to be able to pay their utility bills. And so you guys know me well enough to know that I'm extremely conservative, and so I'm never really interested in us handing money out to businesses. But at the end of the day, we're talking about a situation where these individuals were, were told to and forced to close their businesses by no decision of their own. And so this is an opportunity for us to set aside a portion of, of the revenue that we have to return back to them. And what's great about it is if we use and allocate the business tax receipt revenue, we're returning back to the business owners their own money, is what it comes down to. And so the guidelines that we've set, that staff has set, and it's completely up to you how you would like to administer them, but we've set up the guidelines that it would, the businesses would have to have a current business tax receipt inside the city limits. They would also have to, it would be one application for one location. So if, one of the questions I got from the hair salon was, could each of my dressers make application? And the answer to that question will be no, under the guidelines that we're establishing. It's for the physical location. You have to have a physical storefront location inside the city limits, and it's one per location. And so it'll be whatever the actual location is. They must demonstrate that the close, that they either had to close or their business was greatly diminished by the results of the stay-home order. And they also, and this also is specifically targeted at businesses that are not on the essential personnel list. And so it's businesses that, like I talked about, like the hair salons, like the small retail shops, there's the tattoo shops. There's hundreds of other places inside the city limits of Cresview that fall within this. And so the things that will definitely be excluded from this are those that were deemed to be essential and could remain open throughout the whole time. And so hardware stores were fully operational and fully open throughout this time. They would be not, not allowed. Gun stores and firearm stores also were allowed throughout this entire time, so they would not be eligible. Grocery stores also were allowed, so they won't be eligible. And there's several others as well. This is not a comprehensive list. This is just to give you a general idea of what we're aiming at. And it also will have to be a for-profit agency, so it's not a non-for-profit, and it's, and, which means no schools and no churches would be applying for this. This is for small businesses so that they can keep the lights on. The money would be, would have to be used for paying their rent or paying their utilities. There are things for payroll protection and all that out there. We're aiming specifically at staying in business, which is, which, I almost said payroll, which is, which is either lease or mortgage payments and/or utilities. And that can be our utilities, with us, utilities with Gulf Power, whatever. The cap on it is $1,500 per home, I mean, I'm sorry, per business. Some of the, there was some conversation during the small business discussion, some of you were online for, where they asked, will there be anything for equipment and that kind of stuff? And with the Community Development Block Grant, we think that we'll be able to use money to restock shelves and things like that for the businesses that were closed up, to get them reopened, do advertisement. But this is not for that. This is to keep the rent and the lights covered. And so, again, we've also submitted out a letter to some local banks. They are watching tonight to see what you all do. And I've had three that have expressed interest and, and have given me a verbal commitment to participate in this program. So if they donate, we, what, in case they're watching right now, there's three levels of sponsorship that are up on the screen. If they want, they can be a business champion at 5,000, they can be a promoter at 3,000, or a small business advocate at 1,500. And this, this money will go straight into the account to be distributed directly back out. The program, I know that the City of Fort Walton Beach is presenting a program tomorrow night with a lot more money. They have some more money. Their program has a little bit different restrictions than ours. Ours, I, I provided to you the draft, there's a misspelling on the cover of it, but the draft of the application, so you can get a general idea of how simplified we want this process to be. If you are a business in the City of Cresview and you had to close, if you're a hair salon, if you're a rustic reflection, if you're a, you know, one of these types of businesses, we want you to be able to get through this process, answer the questions honestly, and get you the check as quick as we can. So this is our plan. Again, it's completely up to you. If you approve it, you can change the total amount of money we set aside. You can change the money they get, you can change any component of this you want. The one thing that I have gotten question-wise, and then I'll, I'll shut up, is, you know, is there a minimum or maximum number of employees? I have not provided that to you. You guys can vet that out today and gal, vet that out today if you'd like, and determine, is there a number that's appropriate? One of the things that I know became a, a trip hazard with the county's program was they had a, it was either 20 or 50 employees, I can't remember. But one of the problems that we faced, so let's take one of our small business restaurants in town who has said he would not participate in this program, but thought it was a great deal, so I'll use him as an example. Hub City Barbecue, they've been able to stay open, so they don't anticipate, or he won't be participating in this program. But in that particular case, he employs over 36 people. So if we set, but it's a small business restaurant, and so if we're gonna set a, a minimum amount of people or a maximum, I'm sorry, maximum amount of people, I don't think there should be any minimum. But if there's a maximum amount of employees, it should be, my recommendation is that it's full-time equivalent employees, because he may have 36 people on the payroll, but that doesn't equal 36 full-time employees. Full-time employees would be divided by 2,080 hours a year, so you would say. So like here at the city, we have several employees that do part-time work in the off-season. Add a couple of those together and they count up to be the FTEs. So hopefully that's clear. And again, I'll take any questions that you might have. We're, we're, to shorten it up, 75,000 we're setting aside. The main things I'd like to know from you, do you like the parameters? Are you okay with the program? Do you like the parameters? Is the amount of money appropriate? And do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Chairman?
All right, so I'll start with Councilman LeBeuf.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I love, I love the concept. I do have a couple of points that I'd just like to cover, just some of my own information and some from just general. The first thing, I was happy to say that you didn't use, not gonna use it for the paycheck piece, because we have that paycheck piece that's already out there. Definition of a small business. I mean, I know that you don't want to put in number of employees, and I got that, but some sort of a working definition of what a small business is.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not sure exactly what you would quantify that, but I think there needs to be some definitive as to what is a small business.
Yeah, I think the, I think the, we'll, we'll go through the line here, but I think the most effective way to do that's gonna be to pick employee number. I, I think that's gonna be the only way. We, it, it's either that or it's gross net income.
Gross sales.
Right. And so if it's gross sales, then, then I'm into reviewing people's records and, and I want to, one of the other organizations is paying accountants to do the review of these applications. I want them to be able to come, I want to have a clean checklist, and, and I agree with you. We gotta define it.
Yeah, you're saying, I mean, I agree. And it's gonna be something simple. I, I mean, I'm not trying to make this overly complex.
Got it.
But you gotta have some sort of benchmark as to what, what qualifies for a small business.
Right.
On the sheet that you gave, it just said, what other grants do you have? And it says, will not exclude you from this funding. I'm not so sure. We, we don't want to maybe tweak that to that, if you already have a couple of existing grants that, again, to try to spread this around to people who, who don't qualify for those other grants.
Yep.
I mean, not people, businesses that don't qualify for those other grants. The kind of level of playing field that you don't have a couple of businesses that get three or four grants, one from us, one from the county, one from wherever, 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 that we spread it around to those folks who can't, you can't qualify for those others or don't qualify for those others.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
At some point, I agree, let's do it, but I would like to see a report back to the council. I'm sorry, it's like all of a sudden I hear myself calling, that's why I'm scared. At some point.
Ms. Brown, can you mute your mic?
Fantastic. At some point, I would like to see a report back to us, some sort of a public, public information of who received these grants, for our own information as well.
Yes, definitely.
I don't want to interject in the process, but at some point, I do want to see who, how widespread this project, this was. And my only real question of it is, we talked a couple of weeks ago, months ago, about a city's reserve. And so, my concern is if we make this pot too big, that's going to have a negative impact on us to be able to put money away as our reserve.
Yes.
Again, I'm not advocating not to do it, but my caution there is, you know, I think the $75,000, or 50 or $75,000 is probably about where we're going to put it, because if we go too high, that's going to have a negative impact on our ability to put away our reserves, which we've said in the past, is very important for, you know, preparations for things to come that we don't know. So, I don't want to get too carried away with this program, that it impacts that other program, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir. And if I can interject.
And that's all I have, so yes, you can.
If I can interject, Mr. Councilman LaBeuf, that's my concern too. You know, I want to make sure that we have, obviously, that's the, one of the base concerns.
I mean, I want to make it worthwhile.
Sure.
But at the same point, I don't want to hurt us, so that we can't build a reserve, which we already said we need to.
Agreed, agreed.
That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Councilman Rentsch.
Yeah, 99% of the time, I would be against corporate or business subsidies. You already mentioned that, especially if the upside isn't to the taxpayer. But, but in this situation, the government has told them to shut down. So, on no bid bad business practices or what have you of their own, they have been put into this predicament. I share a lot of the same concerns as Councilman LaBeuf already mentioned. I do think that the 75,000, it's, it's what we can afford. You know, we want to show that we are here to help, but we can't put ourselves in too much of a strain. And this is also returning some of those tax receipts back to those businesses who, 99.9%, 100% is our goal, that they'll be paying those back again in the fall. The small business side of it, I don't really know how to put, you know, the SBA says 500 employees.
Right.
We are way below on how we're trying to classify that. I do think gross sales without getting to the point of a accountant level, so a fiscal 19, profit and loss, something that's already essentially drafted for anybody who's in business, to be able to provide, and if we could agree on a dollar amount that for our community would be considered small business. Is that under, gross sales under a million, is that gross sales under half a million? What is that? That's the question I have.
Right. And that's the question I have.
Correct.
What is that number?
I want to point out the unintended consequences of that, is that some of this may be public record if it's provided to the city, and that may be a disincentive for people to disclose that kind of information.
Is there a way to make it to where it's, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Let's run down the list, and then I think we're going to come back to probably people. It's probably going to come back to people. But, Mr. Blocker?
Yeah, well, I take it, I agree with their definitions, what they've come up with. My main concern were, let's define first what small business is.
Right.
In the limitation of level. And I'd like to say that proposal will come back to us, we might critique it prior to acting on it.
If I may.
Okay. That'll be up to you all.
If I may, Mr. R.
Yeah.
One thing I think we need to do, and Tim has hit this, we need to get the funds out. We need to make sure that we're not being government and slowing things down. The rent is due very shortly, so the faster we can get this process implemented is probably the direction we need to go. And with the dollar amount, it is a lot of money, but it isn't. So, I have every expectation and under, I think Tim will be able to put the right plan together, to be able to give us any given report we ask for in the future. So, my only request is that we are expeditious with this.
Tim Hayes, yes?
I agree with all my fellow councilmen, what they've said, the points are well taken on that. And I was sitting here and I said, well, hopefully, Tim can persuade, if we can get, if we do 75,000, which I can agree with that, if we can get a $90,000 grant.
Yeah.
Then that reduces down to 15,000. If we get our fellow banks to put in $5,000 each, I think we'll break even.
Well, let's, let's talk about that. My intention is, this is a hard 75. So, it's not, it's not subtracting away. So, if we get the 90 from CDBG, we'll have 75 plus 90 equals 165. And then if we get, if we get 5,000 from, you know, some of our banks, or all of our banks in town, all 14 of them I sent letters to, then that, then that'll be 5,000 on top of the 75. I would like to leave here, if at all possible, and I completely understand Mr. Blocker's position, it's a little vague, and that's why we're taking some time tonight to talk about it. But I, but I also, you know, we, again, we sat on the phone with those, and some of y'all were in there with these small businesses, and, and I mean, it's, they're one day away from closing up completely. So, so, but anyway, so I want to set the hard 75, not contingent on anything, and then if we get more, we add more.
And I can agree with that, no problem supporting that whatsoever. I think our main thing, and I like what Councilman Rentsch said about expeditionally getting the funds out. But before we get to that aspect of it, we had to find small business, and I don't think we should wait to another meeting to define small business, if we have to do a call-in meeting or.
Well, let's do it tonight.
We agree on that over the phone and give you authority to move ahead, but I can't see waiting the next two, another two weeks until we make this happen.
I'm going to do my best to get you guys to decide tonight.
And that, that's my recommendation, that we define, we sit here, we got enough time, define small business and get it approved tonight, so we can start the program. So, I believe, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Brown.
Hi, okay, yeah. I think that we, we got to take into account, when we're talking about the beauty shops, that a lot of these ladies are individual renters, one of those ladies owns the shop. So, if we go by just employees, they won't be employees, they're going to be contract people. So, there are going to be like 1099 people that work there. So, it's going to be kind of a little, little bit intricacy with that. Most of those, like they, like whenever you were talking about earlier, the people, they wanted to know if each individual person could apply. So, I know it's like one area, one place for business, I understand that, but we don't, I don't know if we want to define it just as employees. I'm not sure how, how you would define that, but I think the beauty salons are the ones that are really, and the restaurants are the ones that are really, really affected by this.
If we.
So, that's kind of my thought on that. I also think that we're investing in our future as a city if we keep these businesses open, because we're going to get a bigger return on our investment through the years. So, I think this is a great program.
Yes, ma'am. If we, if we set the, if we do an employee number and we set the minimum at zero, it won't matter. It'll be just setting a maximum. So, if we set the maximum at 20, or 30, or 50, or whatever we set the maximum at, then the hair salon that has people as 1099 inside their store, it won't matter, because the minimum employees are zero. Or like rustic where it's run by a family.
There you go.
Or, right, those places where there's just, so I think we start with zero as the number of employees, as the minimum.
Okay.
And then the maximum number is how we tamp down big, bigger business.
That was the point I wanted to make on the minimum as well.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of businesses where it's a family thing, there really aren't any employees. It's a husband, a wife, and a couple, a couple of adult children, or something that are running it. They're not really employees. And so, I would say as zero, but maybe a maximum of something like 50, or whatever number we bent out.
Yeah. Y'all go figure that out, what the max is going to be.
That's my suggestion, that way you get away from those that have 1099s, or those that are all co-owners, or, you know, it's a family business, you don't have that problem of employees.
So.
Yeah. One other, one other thing, isn't the generally, the small businesses considered $250,000 and under a year in the federal government realm? So, I don't know if you want to go with the money period thing that they take in, or what.
I think that's a hard one to run. That's, some of our businesses, so we have three shops that I can think of the top of my head that lease space inside their shop. So, it's shops inside of shops. And so, if you do a gross sales number, then, which is one of the things Councilman Rentsch and I discussed, but if you, if you look at some of these thrift shops that we have, they don't have, their gross sales is not a direct relation to how much they actually make. So, it's, that part makes it difficult. Again, I, we can do it that way, but we're talking about $1,500, and I want to try to get it to the street as fast as possible, so I'd like to just, if, let's pick a, let's pick an employee size, a cap employee size, and if everybody agrees, which they all seem, everyone seems to agree that we do the program, let's, if you guys got time, let's nail down the criteria now.
About 50.
50 is the number we got?
I hear 50, do I?
Do I hear? Pity, 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 pity.
You're talking max, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You're talking about max.
Yeah.
One thing that, if I may, Mr.
Go ahead.
That worries me with having a number at that level is that it's only $75. So, we can essentially work for 75, not even 75 businesses or partials, and we have 1,500.
50 businesses.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, so, if we, we want to make sure that those bigger businesses that may employ 50 people, they're bigger. I mean, I'd rather have that money, that assistance going to that, to 70 or 60 of those businesses that have seven people, 15 people. So, I would think having a full-time, 20 employees, full-time employees, or 25 full-time employees would be a better cap for the community demographic of our small business.
Other thoughts? Go ahead, Councilman.
And I like Mr. Rentsch, what he said. And one thing that I look at too, if you've got 50 or more people, normally you're going to have a larger operation. You're going to recoup your money, in my opinion, more quickly than somebody who's, if you're, like Ms. Brown said, if you're a hairdresser and other things, they'll never recoup that money that they lost, because of the way their business is set up. But, you know, larger businesses, they have losses, but there's other ways, markups and things like that, well, they'll recoup their money eventually. So, I would say 20, agreeing with you, Mr. Rentsch, and that we cap it at 20 for the number of employees.
Of course, I mean.
Okay. Councilman Blocker, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts is not to exceed 25.
We're getting in the ballpark here, 2025. Councilman Brown, your thoughts?
You know, what Mr. Hayes makes sense, that makes sense, they can, and I'm thinking that some of the bigger companies can already tap into the federal dollars, which they've opened back up to, that the little, the smaller employees may not. So, 25, 2025 sounds, sounds fine with me. I just want to get the money out there, so I'm not going to quibble over that.
I'd go either way, 20 or 25. I mean, I think that's small enough to do what we, what we want to do. I think that makes it easier to find out who qualifies for it. I mean, you don't have to do money stuff, there's no income taxes, or anything, all that'll water that. It's a nice, simple measurement. If you have 25 or less employees, you qualify. Move on from there, that's mine.
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then since we have 25 and 20, let's compromise, 22.
22 and a half?
I knew that would be it, but I said, we can't get, we can't get a half a person. But 22, I could go along with 22.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing 25. Will somebody make a motion and put the number in there?
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, he, somebody wanted to comment on, I'm sorry.
I just, what, we can definitely take a motion. What I was going to do is run down specifics and then get you guys to, like, I'm going to put them down, and then I'll, we'll get consensus on like the five or six principles, and then let you vote as a body on all of it. The one thing I would say is, 25 works, let's say 25 as of March 1st, and then that way, there, it's not 25 today, that they had 50 before March 1st, they let everybody go, and then here's today, kind of a deal. Does that?
Yeah, makes good sense.
Yeah.
Does that, does everybody, okay, so.
Okay, so you got to put a date on that.
25, they had to have 25 or less employees as of March 1st.
Right, okay.
Because that's when, that's when we begin watching it here in Florida. Fair enough?
Right. I think you have consensus there.
Okay, so, we have consensus on 25 people, an active BTR. I would like for them to have an active BTR, because that's where the money's coming from.
Absolutely.
For sure.
Ms. Roy, did you have a comment?
Someone, someone did put a question on Facebook about BTRs, and they said, if, what if they have an active BTR but are not, do not have a storefront?
I'll, I'll cover that. Yeah, that's, that's in these, I'll get to those for sure. Okay, so, so it's an active BTR.
Active BTR.
For sure, okay. And then, this is now, I'm going to answer that question. I believe that the requirement should be a physical business location.
Agreed.
Not just an active BTR. So, home occupancies, because we're talking lease, and, because here's the deal, the county did approve a ship program, which will help with your personal lease at home. This is for businesses, so, physical location with a storefront, you know, some sort of storefront, so if it's a restaurant, or a shop, or something like that, you have to have take customers at your physical location. As of, now this, we need to decide, the physical location should be probably as of either 10/1 of last year or January 1st of this year, either one of those are fine. But that way, if it's, if it's January 1st, then they, they will likely have their BTR by now as well. So, I don't think, you know, I want to make sure that it's not a physical location as of yesterday, kind of a deal. It needs to be a business, or it's my understanding that we're aiming at a business that was in place at that time.
January 1st is fine.
I want to give you some input on that. I think you need to have that requirement, because all of this is done under the auspices of the statutes that authorize economic development activities, and one of those is retaining businesses to have a more stable economy. So, Tim knows that, because we discussed it last week, but I think I encourage you to have that, in case there's ever a challenge to this kind of program.
Is there a way to have it as the fiscal address on the BTR? And, I mean, obviously, if they've moved, they'd be able to justify it.
It would be, that's how we'll verify, the fiscal address on the BTR, but I want to make sure, but you get a BTR at your home, if you do what you're supposed to be doing. You know, so, so, and also, and also, if you're, if you are a hairdresser, for example, then you're getting your, you get, you may, depending on how they did it, you may have an individual business license for yourself inside of somebody else's store. This is for the physical building owner, operator, to pay their lease, I mean, lease mortgage for utilities. Because again, the individual, and I feel for the 1099 situation for sure, but they all also got the stimulus money and that kind of stuff as well, too. So, that's, I got a question on here about physical location, I think we've covered that. Roy, you have to have a location inside the city, and it has to be a location that takes customers.
Correct.
Well, then it would cut out manufacturing or anything like that, so.
They were essential.
Okay, oh, that's true, so, that's right, they were essential. Okay, so physical location as of January 1st, seems to be the consensus. Providing a report at each council meeting, absolutely, we'll provide a report of how many applications, how many were approved, I'll present that to you, and I'll provide to you business names individually.
I just want to see how successful the program is.
No doubt, no doubt. The other question I, I need a yes or no answer for, nobody's gonna like this one, is restaurants. Restaurants are, were allowed to stay open, but were at a diminished capacity, uh, because they had to do to-go. So when I wrote the guidelines for this, it was my expectation that restaurants and shops like that would be eligible for this. But I want to make sure I get that answer from, that we all are on the same page about that answer. Now, we have some.
Yes, and there's no restaurants. I mean, I understand the restraints that they were all put under, but again, when we're looking at the, the number of possible grants that we could give, uh, within, within our confines of our money, I, I'd like to focus it, and this is just a personal opinion, because I'd like to focus it more on those businesses that had to close their doors because of what, what we, the government, said they had to do, had no other choice than that. Restaurants, we, at least we gave them an option, now they could choose to do it or not do it, but that was, that was their option. I want to focus this at more of the people who really didn't have an option, because they were told they could not open, they could not operate under any capacity. So although I appreciate the, the, the heartaches that a lot of our restaurants had, they did have some option to at least get something covered, whereas these other businesses had no option, that's, that's my.
Congressman Rensich, are you done with it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, Congressman Rensich.
This is something that definitely tore on me as well, and I have to lean towards Councilman LeBluff and, and his statements. What I would like to have is a provision, though, that if the restaurant did not operate, then it would be qualified. But if it did operate, then it does not.
So, so, and, and that's this, and see, that's the struggle I've been at too, Councilman Rensich, because if you look at some, like I said, some of them had the location and the physical ability to do well.
To do drive-through.
So, yeah, like, the, you know, the ones that were already doing drive-through.
They were, they did.
They were already doing drive-through, but if you look at some of the smaller stuff, the bakery, uh, is a good example, I think of that one, extremely difficult to do that business that way, to shift an entire model in 30 days, um, you know, that's a different scenario there maybe, I don't know. The, and I haven't talked to them, so I have no idea where they fall on this. Coffee shop is another one that wasn't set up to do to-go, it's super awkward on that quarter, I took to-go from there, but I, there's no way they could produce the same, cause the, you know, some of those businesses, it's about atmosphere as much as it is to-go, so, or as much as it is the food, and so that, that part, again, I, this is the tough question, but I don't know. And, and this 25 person is gonna knock down the bigger businesses anyway, the bigger restaurants anyway, it's gonna take them out of the equation, which is, which is probably good, cause that's not what we're trying to do, but. You got it?
Go ahead, Senator Hayes.
Yes, and I, I agree with my fellow councilmen on this, especially what, uh, Mr. Rickley said, uh, concerning, if they were, if they were open versus the ones that were not open, um, we should really take a look at that. So, like, some had an opportunity to make money, and some didn't have an opportunity to make money, but I would really like to look at those ones who didn't have an opportunity to make, make, make funds and were, were closed. Like I say, it's a tough, tough, tough decision, cause I appreciate what, what the restaurants that were opening did and the ones that weren't, you know, I sympathize with them too, um, so it's, it's a, it's a tough call in, in my, in my mind.
Any other comments?
I think Ms. Brown has a comment.
Go ahead, Congressman Brown.
I, I do, you know, I could see from the point of view of how much money that we have now, which is $75,000, to maybe leave the restaurants that remained open out of it, but, you know, it cost them a lot more money to operate, you know, they had to buy a lot more to-go stuff and just things like that, so, uh, but, and if we get the $90,000, maybe we could include them into it later, if that would help them. That's something to think about?
Sure. I mean, we'll, we'll set the parameters for that program as we get it, for sure, we're actually writing the plan right now.
I, I, I come down on this, on the side of trying to help the restaurants too, but I think I'm in the, in the minority on this one.
Oh, it seems pretty even.
And, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
It comes down to us being able to help 50 companies, and I think we have more than 50 companies that are going to qualify, that were forced to, that were a gym, a hairdresser, or salon, uh, different facilities throughout the community that had to close. And, and, you know, business decisions, that's, that's not where we get into telling how to do, how to do what, whether or not they should have. Unfortunately, they were allowed to, so, um, it, it's a difficult one, but.
Sure.
We're, I'm gonna have to say that they, our businesses that were, were shut.
Okay.
And there's, there's no reason that if, for example, we do get another pile of money, that we can then go back and readdress who, who we qualify for the additional money that we receive, but at this time, to me, because of the number of businesses that could qualify, I think we need to kind of keep a lid on it a little bit, because of the limited resources that we have available to it. If the, if the sky opens up and we get a lot more money, absolutely, that's a lot more people, but until then, I think we need to put some kind of restrictions, you know, to, to the number of folks.
Good.
Madam Black, do you like to?
I'd like, I'd just like to throw something out as a private citizen here. Could we eliminate, not eliminate, not do restaurants that actually had a physical drive-up? And, and do the ones that did not?
This is a verification.
But there were some that didn't have it, and what created an ability to do it?
I know they created ability, but it's, it's wasn't a real ability, you know, they had to, they had to do a workaround for, and, cause they're, they're, take it to the curb or have people drive up, but they're, but the people that already had a drive-up, people were used to driving up, the others, maybe not, cause some of the, some of the retails did curbside too, so are you gonna?
I think that's a good point to bring out, is there are definitely retail that did curbside.
So if you're gonna, if you're gonna eliminate restaurants that had to go to curbside with no drive-up, are you gonna eliminate retail that went to curbside with no drive-up?
Again, using the criteria that we were talking about, they had closed their doors, they were not in the limited operations, so if you had a retailer that was doing limited, limited operations, that's not closed your doors.
Well, right, so the criteria that's written, though, says, in, in a drastically reduced capacity, or, uh, must demonstrate closure or greatly diminished capacity to sell as a result of a stay-at-home, because it's, the, the, the risk of, and this is why, why it's such a sticky end, but I, but I do appreciate this board seeing it through tonight. I think it's big for your community, for our community, for the people you represent, that we're seeing it through tonight, I'm proud of y'all, not that you care, but I am. But, but I think that, you know, the, the challenge is, we also don't want to punish the ones that tried to continue. So, so that's where that, and I, I did think of that, Ms. Roy, that there are some that tried, cause we, you know, we did some Facebook purchasing and went and picked them up at some of these places to try to support them as well, so, um, it's a tough deal. Do we, do we not think that we can cover the bigger ones by, by 25 people? If we say 25 employees, that, I think that's gonna knock out restaurants that probably were successful any otherwise. But.
Here's one, I mean, what's the intended, uh, how are we gonna publish this, how are we gonna let everybody know?
So we'll do, we'll do our regular press, so Main Street, uh, Main Street Association is a huge partner in this with us, um, too, so they'll be pushing it out, um, we'll be pushing it out through all the social media avenues, um, Tony Jutney and I, I had an interview from the Daily News today about it, they're all waiting to see what the results are, so we'll do regular press release stuff, and we'll push it out, we need to do a time window, um, I don't know if we're gonna do a time window, what, what we'll do is we'll say we're gonna start taking applications on whatever the date is, and then accept them and approve them and process them till we run out. Cause again, we, cause the risk is to get into where we do like this many days to apply, but then we're delaying again, and then we run into.
Well, no, that's why I was gonna say, is if we did get that message, and you're, there was an order of merit, so until the funds is dispersed completely and it's out, so, so if you were operating but in a diminished capacity versus op, not operating at all, well, you know, as that money goes, it's only 50, you know, so.
Yeah, it's 50 full amount.
There's a, say, a, a three-day lag between those applications or what have you, so that the people who can, who are officially closed can be front-loaded, and then if they don't get into the, the order within that set period of time, everybody else is, is now able to, so that, that still streamlines the process for those people who've been open or that were questioning anyway, that gives them a chance.
Yeah.
But it opens it up to where our, everybody who's been diminished and not able to operate has the first chance at getting the funds.
Yeah.
How hard is that to?
I think it's hard, if I'm gonna be completely candid with you, I think it creates another layer of, and, and, you know, I, I love the idea, we, we talked about this before we got here, that, you know, I, I want to be able to quantify who's getting it. I don't think we're going to be dealing with greed in this situation at all, um, you know, it's a small amount of money, so, so we're, you know, it, it's, it's a big amount of money to the city, it's a small amount of money in the big picture thing, but it's a big amount of money to the small businesses that are, that can't do it, so the, the, the salons that need to keep their lights on and their rent paid and all that, um, so I, I just think that, um, sometimes you're gonna, gonna feed the greed to feed the need, I hate to say that, but, but sometimes that happens, um, I think, I think the, the, the number of employees is a good, that's a good set number, I think that keeps it pushed way down, um, and, you know, we, I know that if you guys are successful tonight in approving this, that Commissioner Boils intends to, to go tomorrow and ask the county to match some funds with us too, so that's gonna grow that number here locally. They were not able to get their program done, he has committed to me, and he committed in a public meeting that he was going to ask them to take the money they're cutting from the business tax receipts and instead funnel it into, uh, the city's programs if they have programs, so us or anybody else who has a program to fund those programs, funneling into those programs, so it makes you the number go up, um, but, uh, yeah, so, I will do whatever you ask me to do. I want, I just want to get to the process as quick as possible, so, um, yeah, so that, that's the last question we got, that I had.
Multiple grants.
Say it again?
Multiple grants.
Oh, can they have multiple grants, that's right, so, so let's answer the, did we answer the yes or no on restaurants? Can, can you poll them?
Okay, right now, the question is, are we, are we going to eliminate those restaurants that were partially open? And you're saying we should eliminate them, right? And, and Congressman Rensich, you're saying we should eliminate them?
Yes.
Okay, Congressman Blocker?
First, I'd like for Tim to recount the context of what we've asked you to do.
Okay, I, I, I think that's what I was doing, sir, so, um, I mean, so right now, the, the context of it is that I'll provide a report to you at each meeting, they must have a, a physical business location inside the city limits as of January the 1st, um, they must have an active.
I got a point on that.
The poll was including restaurants or not, we're not voting on the entire thing yet.
That's right.
We're just trying to, uh, to decide, are we going to include restaurants?
You're right, you're right. I just need an answer whether you want to eliminate the restaurants that were open at all, Congressman Blocker?
Right.
You do?
Yes.
Okay, and you, uh, may protect Hayes?
Yes, and if I might make one other comment, um, yes, right now, if we can get that block grant, we might need to relook at this issue again.
Okay, Congressman Brown, what are your feeling on the restaurant?
No. I'm going, no, that's okay.
All right, so we're, so we're going to say, um, essential businesses and restaurants are excluded. And then, uh, active BTR, 25 people as of March 1st, and then the next question was.
You just eliminated all the restaurants?
Yes, that's what you just did.
No, that's not what they, that's not what I heard. They said, they said the restaurants.
The problem is, the problem is, Mr. Mayor, how, I, at what point is completely closed? So if, if, I don't know, i- if they were open for a portion of the time, that's what concerns me, and that's, that was the question Councilman Rensich asked me, is, is how complicated is that going to get, and I think it's gonna open me up to, to, to legal.
But if you had a restaurant completely closed, then they wouldn't be eligible, that what you're saying, just gonna eliminate them?
No, that's what y'all are saying, but, yes, I mean, that's what's being said, that's, that's the way I took it, so if I took it wrong, let's, let's circle back. Well, let me ask this question, Mr. Holloway, do you think I can draft language that will allow it if people were closed part of the time, that's, that's the concern I have, when, when was the closure date, when was the opening date?
Right.
Cause what's, the, the reason I have gun shows, or gun shops, hardware stores, and grocery stores is because there's no question they were full-speed the whole time.
That's easy.
So those were easy, restaurants were that one that's in the middle, that's just so difficult for me.
Okay, I probably misunderstood it then.
Well, because the question is, I mean, if they started, but they, they shut down, or they went to something, I mean, you've got all these various shades of open, partially not open, or they, they used to do three meals a day, now they only did one, as I call it, I mean, the, the, the parameters to me just seem to be.
No, the, the question I was bringing up is if they, if they felt because of the situation, they couldn't, they couldn't provide anything, they completely closed down, and we're gonna eliminate them, and you, that's what I'm hearing you're saying, which is not what I thought we wanted, but I guess it is.
No, I, I, I want to clarify, I want to clarify.
Hey, so, so, so I have a restaurant, and I can't, I can't figure out how to get anybody in there, and I don't like, like, I don't have a drive-through or carry out service, whatever, so I just closed down, but now I'm eliminated from this program. But I completely closed.
If I may.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
I think.
You, I did. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, actually, Congressman Rensich has the floor, then I'll go to you, okay? Go ahead.
I think more what we're trying to tie this to, or if, if I'm understanding the other member, is what the government told us to do. So, so, you know, what the, the municipality, what the, the government told them, they couldn't be open. So that would be the hairdressers, the, the gyms, the, uh, the, the restaurants had the ability to adjust their business plan and to remain open, now, as a business owner, I, I hate to even say it like this, but because the unknown is always something businesses don't like, but this first $75,000 needs to go towards the businesses that were forced to shut down, and if we can get additional funds, and that's the word I don't like to use with business, if, because it's the unknown, we can get additional funds, say, from Commissioner Boils and the county, or, or from sponsorships and stuff of that nature, and we see the need for those other businesses that come forward saying, hey, no, no, I need this.
I understand, I think I misinterpreted where we were going, so, that was my fault, I didn't get, uh, Congressman Brown, you had something?
Now, Andrew just really said most of what I, what, what I was thinking about, but, but I think that these, these, the small business and the small restaurants are what is the backbone of Cresview, and we need to really think about taking care of them. What Mr. Betsy said may be a great criteria, whether or not they had a drive-through when they started with this, because I'm pretty sure that the people that had people come in for the ambiance, uh, you know, you know, some of the little downtown people went in to sit there and eat, so, you know, they lost business, and it's gonna be hard for them to, to come back from that, I mean, you have to order so much from your food suppliers and, 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 you know, all those suppliers you have to have to keep your, to keep, to keep your supply up and to make enough money to sell it. It, I just, I just, I hate to eliminate what I consider one of the best things that Cresview has to offer. So I, I still say, uh, keep the restaurants in, but I'm, I'm in the minority on that one.
Okay, thank you.
I'll present two points, if I may.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so one comment we did receive on Facebook during this was, you could say restaurant sales that dropped by a certain percentage, pick whatever that percentage is, and then, um, I, as much as I hate the idea of making them provide documenta, like P and L documentation, I like that better than if they had to close or didn't close, so if you, if we, if we want to do that, that's an option. Another option is you guys can set the program up so that if we get money in addition to the $75,000, that after, if, if we're able to raise any more money, then monies beyond the first $75,000 are eligible to restaurants on a first-come, first served basis, you could do that.
I like that.
Are you comfortable with that?
That's fine, yeah.
My only suggestion was.
You're comfortable? Congressman Brown? Oh, I'm sorry. Cindy, you're comfortable with that, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
I think it's a consensus.
So they were talking about restaurants that, that were partially open or, or totally closed, I'm sorry, I lost the bubble there?
The second thing would be, that, well, if, beyond 75%, if I raise any more money for, I mean, beyond 75,000, if I raise any more money for this program.
Right.
In any way.
Right.
Then that money is eligible to restaurants and the other businesses, so it's a first.
I know, but I mean, the restaurants that permanently closed, or that, that reduced the capacity?
Under 25,000, I mean, under 25 people, yeah.
I would take that out of there and just go back down to.
So no matter if they were making money or not?
Right.
Okay.
And then I'd like for the attorney to speak to this, cause he's gonna help me write it.
Right, and I was fine with it, and my only guidance was to have a.
Right, and I was fine with it, and my only guidance was to have objective criteria, which I think you would do there. If they want to disclose their numbers, they can disclose their numbers if they want that grant. Correct.
So, do you want to, do you, do you guys want to add a percentage number to that too? On the restaurants?
If they fit the category, and, and there's extra funds, and they, you know, we know restaurants were harmed during this. So, I, I don't know if them having to show how much more additional work that's gonna put on the staff versus if they hit that criteria, and we get in excess of funds, now they are able to, to be included within that criteria of the under 25 employees, and I don't necessarily know if you really want to have, I mean, we're staying away from gross sales receipts and stuff of that nature, so you probably don't want to have to get into percentages and calculations on month-to-month revenue.
I don't.
Correct.
But if I need to, I will. I mean, we're capable of it, I'm just trying to get it moved as fast.
Yeah, we don't want complicated results, okay?
Okay. So, and, and, and then, we're gonna go back to whatever it was, I can't remember.
Multiple grants.
Oh, yeah, multiple grants. Before we go to multiple grants, in the process, in the guidelines for this, applications will be, we're, we're gonna provide a place to submit the application, applications will get a receipt, like, a received number assigned to them, and they will be processed in the order they were received. So, they'll, so, when an application comes in, we will reserve out of the amount, the total amount, then we'll process their application. If they're, you know, if they're disqualified for not having their stuff, then, then they, that money will go back into the pot. If they get less, then the balance will go back in, but that's how we're gonna do it. So, that way, if we end up adding cri, because I'm about to ask you one more question about criteria, if we add criteria to it, that takes me time to research, they'll hold their money while we do the research, and then they'll either be approved or denied. Does that make sense? Because one of the questions is-
Yes.
-how are you gonna prioritize them? So, as they come in, go.
And I just want one other part, that there be a present intention to reopen.
Oh, yeah.
Ah.
Why not?
They, they have an intention to reopen, because you have to-
Oh, yeah.
Economic development's about retaining business.
Great point, great point. The purpose is to get them to come back.
Get them to back working.
Yeah, if you're gonna close, get out of here.
Exactly.
So, um-
A present intention to reopen.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, so, that present intention to reopen, how are we gonna quantify that, 30 days? They have to be still operational 30 or 45 or 60 days?
Time to the expiration of the governor's executive order that shut down the lobbies.
That's Thursday.
Yeah, that's Thursday.
30 days, then.
So, they have to be, they have to be open in operation for 30 days after the day they receive it? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I would prefer, because you're doing this under the economic development authorities that you're using.
But that's the real purpose, is to give them some funds so that they can come back in business.
I can do that, we can do that.
All right.
And then, and then, and actually, if you notice in the bottom of the application, it says if you lie, we come back and get the money, kind of a deal. So, we'll, we'll take care of it then, that way. All right, so, the last question that I need to have answered is, are they eligible for this if they've received other grants? And the only thing I want to start the conversation with, since I got the mic right now, is the PPP is payroll.
Right.
You're, you know, and so, what they're having, people are making the deci, now it's too late to make the decision, but they were making the decision, if I go get that, I keep employees and pay them to be at home, but I can't pay the rent or the, you know, lights. And so, this was intended to fill in where those don't fill in.
Right.
And it's very, it's gonna be very narrow, it has to go, they're, they're gonna have to provide me receipts of their, they're gonna show me the Gulf Power bill, gas bill, and then they're gonna have to show me the receipts of the payment of that, so, it's gonna be very narrow.
And since I brought the point, it might be, I'm not concerned about they got PPP for their employees. That's not the type of grants that I'm worried about. I'm worried about for the same, for basically the same thing that we're providing a grant for-
Okay.
-that they received already. In other words, if the county comes around and says, hey, I'm gonna provide grants for the same problem, the same issue, I don't want multiple grants to the same company, to the same business, to cover the same thing. That's why I said not paychecks.
I got it.
PPP is a loan program, there are other grant programs, though.
The bridge, yeah.
It may be forgiven, but it is a loan program, not a grant program.
Right. Is that, I mean, is that what I'm, what I'm, what I'm saying?
Yep.
I mean, that's just my opinion, you, you guys are just not-
Councilman Rentsch, go ahead.
Some of those have been applied for, they have no clue if it's coming. So, then, they're all at different levels. So, the PPP is at the federal level, the bridge is at the state level, this is at the city level. That's also gonna be more difficult for you to figure out, like, and if they don't know, and then they, they get it, now we have them worried about how are they gonna pay back this? We just need to take that out of the worry, probably, in my-
So, I'm, 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 I'm listening, like I say, it's a complicated issue, but it's something that I think we need to do. And I, I know we're looking at a short timeframe to try to get our thoughts together, and, you know, there's always gonna be some questions about whether we could've did it differently. But how long do we keep on saying, well, let's wait and see this, or let's wait it off? You know, for the council, we've been moving exponentially along what we do, what we think, and I think we've been making pretty good decisions, and, and from my mind, and our citizens, I think, trust us to make the best decisions for them. So, I'm for it. I like what, what he said there. You got those tough things about the restaurants, but we have to get past that. And like, my recommendation was, you know, like I say, look at that second pot of money if you get it. I still believe that.
Okay. Go ahead.
I would say we leave the grant funding on there as a question, but don't have it as a deciding factor on whether or not the business qualifies. And that's just gonna allow us to know, you know.
I think, yeah. I think the question was-
Go ahead, Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I think the question was, that will, will we give them this grant money if they already got another grant pertaining to their business? But now, what the, this started out to be this last round?
Yes, pretty much.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, I, I think that each pot comes from different places, and if you're trying to pay your employees, and you get a grant, great, but if you can't keep your lights on and your, your grant paid, then you won't be having any employees anyway. So, I think that this should just be standalone grant, no matter if they've got another grant or not.
Okay. I think we got a, we got a majority vote. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would, I would seek a motion to approve-
Yeah, summarize what we're, what we're doing.
About to do it for you. Staff is seeking a motion to approve the creation of the Small Business Grant Program, and for the city council to approve seeding funds of $75,000 from business tax receipts out of the general fund, with the purpose of this grant to ensure economic development and sustainability in our communities. And it is, the criteria required in this will be a, not less than one monthly, one report each month to council on the status of the grants, a physical business location as of January 1st, with a storefront, in, active business tax receipt, 25, not more than 25 employees as of March the 1st, and a clawback requirement of 30 days of continued business beyond the date or the receipt of the grant. It also will require proof of receipts for payments and those kind of things. We'll work at that on the logistics side. And it also, the grant, the establishing perimeters of this grant do allow for any revenues beyond the first $75,000 to be made eligible to restaurants that fall within the remaining criteria.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the staff's recommendation for the grant program.
Thank you.
Mr. Holloway, you have a call?
Discussion.
Okay, I have a motion second for the, to approve that recommendation, over for discussion. Go ahead, Councilman.
But we're still gonna exclude the, the, the businesses that you have in here, those essential businesses.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, I mean-
Essential businesses to be excluded.
Because some of the stuff that you gave here, it didn't necessarily, you know-
I love to know. But I, I, friendly amendment to the motion would request that we, essential businesses be excluded from this grant entirely.
Sure.
So-
Because again, that was the going in.
Good.
Okay.
I mean-
Everybody's, everybody's-
I'm gonna make the motion that we accept amendment as presented.
We have voted on the other motion, can't have two motions on the floor at the same time.
Well, we have to get the amendment.
The amendment.
Then, first, we go back to reading the motion.
And I second the amendment to the motion.
All right, so, motion as amended. Does everybody understand the motion as amended?
I hope so.
Okay, let's do a roll call on that, starting with Councilwoman Brown.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman LeBoff?
Yes.
Councilman Rentsch?
Yes.
Councilman Blocker?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Hayes?
Yes.
All right.
Now, we go to a regular motion.
No, it was a friendly amendment, you're good.
No, that was an amendment.
No, that was the amendment rolled into the motion.
So, so, one last thing before we get off the city manager's comments. I do want to, those of you who haven't seen it, the mayor did a, basically a state of, not a state of the city, but a public address on Sunday, which kind of outlines our position from an administrative perspective on this process of reopening. And it is our expectation that the, the governor will, in the next, I thought he would've done it on, on Friday, but I think the Georgia governor got us all messed up. But I, I expect that if he hasn't during this meeting, that soon he will release his, his answer on what we're going to do after Thursday, when the Safe at Home expires. It's our expectation that there will be some form of opening. If the governor pushes those responsibilities down to the city level and the county level, we are prepared to provide an answer to our businesses. As it stands right now, we expect to allow them to practice social distancing as they reopen in accordance with the president's guidelines. And so, I'll provide each of you those guidelines, but it is a 14-day, by, step-by-step review process, there's several phases to it, but it allows them to open back up as long as they're practicing reasonable social distancing, and it gives some kind of criteria for how to do that. So, other than that, here at the city, we are going to, we began to bring people back today, and are doing that on a slight basis this week. By next week, we will be fully operational here at the city, we'll, we'll be fully present at the city, and then, hopefully, two weeks, we'll actually begin to open our lobbies again. So, we're getting people back in, continuing to do work. We have worked throughout, but we'll continue to do work and hopefully have our lobbies open in about 15 days, give or take, 15 to 25 days, give or take. So, that's kind of the status. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Believe it or not.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for, um-
I guess I-
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, only one thing, on, on this business recovery grant, which, which we just approved to go through, that, that down here where it said reviewed by, who's the reviewer's gonna be on that?
More than likely, I'm gonna engage our contractor for the Community Development Block Grant, because, her name's Krista Shepherd, we'll probably engage, I'm gonna, I'm supposed to meet with her tomorrow to talk about it, because it will be, it's, the review process and the application process is very similar to community development block grants. It will match the plan that we're writing for the additional $90,000 that we're going to get. So, more than likely, it'll be that way with final approval by me, and then a report to you.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Rentsch?
Is there a reason that we've only went to the banks with the, when we have some other fairly big businesses within the community that might?
I thought it was pretty audacious to ask banks, so, I mean, if you think I should send it out to Lowe's, I'll be happy to do that. I'll be more than happy to do that, twice.
I don't know, I just think that if we're sending it out to some of the bigger banks, and then some of our bigger corporate companies can, I mean, at least have the chance to look at it.
We can definitely do that. We, we can do that. I, I really, I, that's, that wasn't my idea, that was Main Street's idea, Sandra, you know, is always challenging me with stuff like that, and so, I thought it was a great idea, we did it, and surprisingly, I got three responses right away of people interested in participating. One of them was waiting on your vote, so I'll be calling him right away, and providing each of you his number.
There's one other thing, I, I, I like what you're saying there, especially about your large, large corporations. It won't hurt to ask them anyway, they might, all they can say is yes or no. But for, in my opinion, just by seeing, you know, going, those few times I went to certain places like grocery stores or Walmarts or somewhere, that's the only place people could go. So, they were making money, and now, they might've lost money on this, I don't think they really did, because if you go to the grocery stores, a lot of time, they had sold out a bunch of stuff anyway, but, so, people bought other stuff they normally wouldn't have bought to cover for that. And when you only got one major place that, where you can go get everything, one-stop shopping almost, that's where they went. So, I, we can reach out to them, if they say no, I mean, I wouldn't feel bad, but hopefully, they'll say yes. I'm sure you can make it persuasive where my-
I'm gonna send, I'm gonna send the first letter to a large gun shop inside the city limits.
Okay. You done now?
He didn't stop.
I may even be done done, no.
All right. Councilwoman Brown, do you have any closing comments for us this evening?
Uh, no, I'm just, just being in the council chambers with you guys, and hopefully, we'll be all, be there next time. So, in that, great job, everybody, it's, it's been a long, long meeting, so, good job, and, you know, I'm really proud of what Mayor Whitman's done with our community, he is bringing us together, I just wanted to say thank you for that.
All righty, thank you. And sitting down with Councilman LeBoff, you had anything to share with us?
Yeah, just quick, I, I would kind of echo what, what, so, the thing is, you know, thank, thank the staff for all the work that they've done through this time period, and you know, they, they've kind of kept it, kept it as even going as they possibly could, to Tim, to all those folks, and of course, Mr. Mayor, our visible part there. And if you remember about a month or so ago, I said, can we just please kind of all just have a sense of humor, kind of get through this, kind of, you know, let's, let's not get too wrapped up around it? And I think that by and large, that's happened. You know, I mean, there's, there's been some bubbles here and there, but I think pretty much you could say across the board that everybody's kept their sense of humor and kind of worked through this together. Nobody knew what, what to expect, we still don't know what to expect, and now we're gonna go back to the opening up again, and nobody really knows how that's gonna go. But again, I like to thank everybody for their patience, as we tried to all work through Uh, but again, I, I'd like to thank everybody for their patience, uh, as we tried to all work through this as best that we could. And thanks to those folks, to, uh, the medical folks and the city folks and, uh, everybody else for pulling us through this as far as we've gotten so far. So again, just thanks all the way around, and to you, too, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rentsch?
I will echo everything, Councilman will bluff it, and then I will shut my mouth, since I've probably already talked quite a bit.
Councilman Blocker?
Echo, 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 echo.
All right, good.
I'm just saying, also, I wanna make another statement involving, for Tim. On our phone conversation we had earlier today-
Yes, sir.
And you said, I, asked me if I had any question.
Yes, sir.
I hope you understood my, what my statement was, it sounded like we got clicked off before I finish up my statement.
Okay.
I said, yes, but you, all probability, you cannot answer it.
Right.
And I said, all right, I'll let you do it tonight before the world.
Oh, okay.
I have been asked from many people, when will you stick your neck out to get it chopped off, or will heck you get it held in place? You make a prediction to when these business that has been restricted to outside business can bring to public inside? When would you make that prediction, or could you make that prediction, and then including our churches and our...
Sure, I'll make a prediction on that, um, all my contemporaries are cringing right now, but I'll make a prediction on that. If the governor passes the responsibility to the cities and the counties, we will announce that, that they can begin reopening on the, on Friday, uh, which is the day following the stay-at-home order, um, there will be some additional requirements for it. I've already, um, been speaking with businesses, the mayor and I have spoken about it, he made a statement about it on Sunday, and, um, it's our expectation that they'll be at least partially able to open, begin to open on Monday, and then we'll follow the president's guidelines and continue to monitor it in fourteen-day increments, and if we see a spike, then I'm sure that, that our friends at the county will help us figure out that it's time to peel back. So, depending on what the governor does, who, who has the ultimate control here in the state of Florida, but if he, if he pushes it down to us, we're gonna take that and, and run with it.
Good, thank you. Y'all heard it now.
And Pro Tem Hayes?
Uh, yes, I, I'd just like to echo what some of my council, uh, and councilwomen have said, uh, towards the great work and jo, uh, that I've seen, uh, um, that going above the expectations of, of what, uh, some cities would, would look for. Uh, I know what our mayor, the city manager, uh, we expect great things, and they've met that challenge as far as I'm concerned. Um, one thing with the, the feeding that we had, um, this past Saturday, tremendous, tremendous. Uh, one, the main thing that struck me was that, uh, we're meeting the needs of our citizens, but another thing we had to look at, what went on behind the scenes, the planning. And then you get the planning and everything, do, that's good, you could have plans on paper and everything else, or, but then, the execution of those plans is what I like. Uh, they were execute, they were planned, and then they were executed in an A-plus manner, from what I've seen. I haven't heard, no, nobody complained about it, and if they did, I sympathize with you, but, uh, they did a great job on that. So my hats go off to staff, uh, to our city manager, to our city mayor, and to all our citizens of Crestview and those, uh, from around the areas that came out and supported that great effort.
Thank you, so, you took my thunder away, Mayor Tim, that's okay.
I thought you might fall out, so I just said safe.
No, no, I, I couldn't, I couldn't close. I, I, I couldn't close without talking about that event, and I'm not gonna go into a long speech, but, but I will tell you that it, uh, took a lot more work than people would imagine. Took a lot of coordination between different organizations, different churches, businesses, city staff, city manager who can, he can drive a mean...
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, and I just thank everybody that participated in that, uh, uh, we've gotten a lot of good comments on Facebooks, uh, Facebook, and emails, and phone calls, and, uh, yeah, we had some minor glitches, like you did or anything, but we, we re-recovered from all of them. But to see all the different churches come together, the banks, credit unions, the, uh, restaurants that fed our people, it was, uh, it was truly, and I'll close with these remarks, it was truly a community coming together.
There it is.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public that need to be shared at this time?
No, sir, I think, uh, we tried to address them as we went, I think we're good.
Okay.
Uh, but Betsy, did you have any?
Yeah, uh, there was one about salons and barber shops, and I'm sure that's about the opening, and y'all will address that when the time comes, correct?
Correct, yes.
And the other one was someone, I don't, she don't, they don't get paper receipts, can they print electronic receipts?
Yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate with them on it, but certainly.
Okay, having said that, you had a last one?
We have a workshop scheduled for the thirtieth, is that, that's off the books now, right?
Yeah, it's, we, we do not have a workshop on the thirtieth.
Oh, we don't?
If you're, if you're looking on your calendar and you see it, that is a committee meeting for the photography bid, that's not a workshop.
It's, we don't, we do not have a...
So we have nothing for two, for, until our, our normal scheduling meeting switches, okay? I'm sorry, I just wanna clarify.
No, that's all right. I don't want you to be sitting here by yourself on the thirtieth.
Yeah, I, I, I'd put it on my calendar, too.
Yeah, I know, I know.
It's all right.
All right. Having said that, tonight's meeting is adjourned.
Oh, don't forget to sign.
Bye, everybody.